To the flag, flag. United States of America. To the republic which sustains one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, just and just.
Okay, this meeting is being held remotely, so I'm gonna read the standard phrase that the town clerk has gave us, given us to read in these situations. Meeting is being held in accordance with the Governor of Massachusetts' March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General laws, Chapter 38, Section 20. No public attendance will be permitted in person. The public can access this meeting via WebEx technology. And until further notice, the Burlington School Committee will hear public comment virtually only. Meetings are also broadcast live with the BCAT as usual. For those who are looking to join via WebEx, the meeting number is two, three, three, eight, four, zero, nine, two, eight, six, seven. And the meeting password is Tuesday. Okay, good evening, everybody. The first item on our agenda is approval of the warrant is their motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the warrant as submitted. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Aye.
Aye, abstain.
Three, zero, two, the warrant is approved. Uh, next item is public participation. This is only by remote. Mr. Kuhn is gonna be monitoring the, uh, uh, the feed, just to see if anybody who is wanting to speak, just raise your hands remotely electronically. Public participation is for only items that are not otherwise on our agenda. So if you wanna speak to something that's on our agenda, you have to wait till that item is, is brought forward. Is there anybody out there who wants to speak in public particip- participation? And Mr. Kuhn is around any hands? Okay, thank you. Moving on to item number four, informational reports, subcommittee reports. Does anybody have any subcommittee reports they wanna bring forward?
Uh, Mr. Chair, we'll have a Board of Health report later in the agenda.
Okay. Seeing done, ways and means, Roger, or ways and means, is anybody present this evening?
Uh, I'm present, but I have nothing at this time.
Thanks, Roger. Student representative, I understand that a, a new student representative for the upcoming school year, Brooke Hovas is with us this evening. If you're out there, Brooke, uh, please say hello. How are you?
Good.
Good. What do you got to tell us?
Um, basically, right now, we haven't had any meetings yet this year, but I talked to some of the people and they want to have some sort of code coming, but we're not a hundred percent sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, it probably should work directly with, uh, school administration on that one.
Yeah, that was the only thing that they told me to bring up.
Okay. Alrighty, well, welcome. Uh, look forward to working with you over the course of the year. Uh, have any questions for us? Anybody have any comments?
Just happy to meet her. Yep.
Hopefully, at some point, we'll have you in here in person and we can all get to know each other. Other than that, thank you for coming tonight and, uh, we'll talk to you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Item five on our agenda, uh, coronavirus update from the superintendent, Dr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think we will have a lot of, um, COVID discussion tonight, uh, later in the agenda. But I did wanna give, um, Patrick a chance. I know that he's, um, attended a Board of Health meeting and, um, had weekly meetings with Susan Luminello. Um, I think I attended one of those and I know he'll say it, but I just wanted to, um, start by, again, thanking the Board of Health and thanking Susan for her, uh, support and guidance through this process. So, Patrick, do you wanna give a brief update for us, please?
Sure, um, again, I'm trying to figure out where to start with, uh, the update as opposed to what we have discussed previously. But again, as Dr. Conti said, we appreciate your ongoing support of the Board of Health this year in navigating a situation which is a little bit less clear because we have fewer tools in our toolbox right now in regards to what we can do when we have a positive case in a classroom. We've had a couple of positive cases in the district, um, in the last few days and, uh, we've notified all the families within those classrooms. They're aware of those, uh, one at Memorial and one at Francis Wyman. And, um, that's gonna be our protocol moving forward. We'll continue to update on our website, on the COVID resource page, uh, the number of cases that are happening in the district. Uh, also keeping track of how many students are quarantined in our district. We get a daily update from the Board of Health based on the numbers they have. And, um, for tomorrow, we'll have our highest number of quarantined, uh, again, basically because of those two classrooms at, uh, one at Memorial and one at Francis Wyman. That's a total of thirty-one students quarantined, um, at those two schools. The total for the district tomorrow will be forty-five students quarantined, which is, um, our high watermark so far, um, this school year. We're working on, I know we're gonna probably repeat this, um, when we get to the coronavirus update later on. We're working on, um, again, with feedback from the Board of Health to make sure we're, um, kind of melding together, which is difficult this year, the DPH guidelines and the Department of Education guidelines, which sometimes are in conflict. So we're working on the test and stay protocols, talk a little bit about, about that, um, during the COVID update. That's, that's pretty much it. Again, we're working well, as we did last year, daily communication when there's, um, cases involved, um, with the Board of Health. And the one thing I wanna let families know, uh, again, because of the staffing, both with, um, district and, and the Board of Health, we are not doing twenty-four, seven contact tracing, which we kind of, uh, tended to be on call at all hours last year. And we don't think that's a sustainable practice. So we're, um, we're doing the best we can up until a certain point in the evening. And then we'll, we resume, uh, our activities in the morning when school opens. And I know the same thing with the Board of Health, which I understand, um, we were on, in contact on weekends at night last year. And, uh, come into this school year, we're just trying to, uh, make sure that we're all starting with a, with a caseload that's manageable when it comes to dealing with these situations. There is a COVID concerns email that we've publicized, uh, covidconcerns@bpsk12.org, which families can, um, uh, you know, email us at any time. And I'm basically, myself and, uh, the nurse leader are responding to questions there. And, um, I do tend to check that up until eight or nine o'clock at night and try to respond accordingly. So, and again, uh, they can call us too if there's, there's something pressing. We know it's, it's a different year, um, there's a few more unknowns, again, with the Delta variant and with some students vaccinated and some unvaccinated. And we just, uh, we ask for patience and we're trying to get to people as quickly as we can.
Just for some of the changes, just so, uh, for the committee, um, the, one of the specific discrepancies between, uh, Department of Education and Mass DPH, and our Board of Health follows Mass DPH, was the distance for contact tracing. So, um, last week, DESI changed their contact tracing standard from three feet to match, to six feet to match Mass DPH. So they're asking us to contact trace, um, over a larger distance. And we have four hundred more, uh, elementary students, um, in our buildings. So, um, there's less space. So, um, when Patrick mentioned that we have forty-five, uh, students in quarantine, there may only be a few positive cases that are generating a much larger set of close contacts. So if you're saying, why do we have more close contacts? It seems like we have more close contacts this year than last year. Uh, again, we have more students in the building and Patrick, uh, DESI, now, now DESI and the Mass DPH are aligned for close contacting at six feet, is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct, um, because there was a strange scenario prior to that. If, if we were doing contact tracing, we would have to do at six feet anyway because the Board of Health, again, based on Department of Public Health guidelines, that's what they follow, would have been contact tracing at six, six feet to let, um, families know that those students are quarantined. But the depart- Department of Education was saying three feet. So we would have a group at three feet and a group at six feet. And, um, we'd have two different quarantine groups. Um, and it, it was very confusing. I think a lot of lo- local, um, towns were having the same conflict. And finally, after some pressure, the Department of Ed decided to go, um, with the DPH guidelines, which I think makes a lot of sense.
So the, um, another term that you'll come to know of is. Test and stay. And test and stay is a, um, is a plan where, um, if there's a positive case and we are close contacting, if their students are asymptomatic, then, um, they can be given a rapid test. And if the test is negative, then they can stay in school. Implementing test and stay, um, has been a, a challenge. We, we just received our test last Friday afternoon. And we're working with a company, uh, the state has contracted with the company to track all the positive, um, cases. And, um, they've been overwhelmed and their software isn't really, um, working, um, yet. So, um, test and stay is not up in, is not up and running. And, um, we're hoping, um, just to give some sort of data is, is an expectation maybe around October first. It's not something that we can, it's not, everything's not within our control. So we are trying to get it up and running as quickly as possible. There are districts that are rapid testing now. And the majority of districts who are rapid testing now that I've contacted, and Mr. Foss, I believe this is the case that we just discussed, is they're using leftover tests from last year. They're not using the test and stay rapid tests, which have just come out, um, are just being delivered, um, mostly last week. And again, another interesting piece of trivia is the, uh, the state changed the expiration date. So, um, so the tests from last year are still, uh, are, are still valid. Uh, again, Patrick, another point to emphasize with the test and stay program is the test and stay program only applies to school-related events. So if your child is identified as a close contact and is quarantined, and they participate in the test and stay, they can attend class. But if they go home, they're not supposed to participate in any other community events. So they're supposed to act like a quarantined individual, except for coming to school. And the reason they can come to school is because of the mitigation factors we have in place, like masking and like, um, the air exchanges and distancing. So, um, that means, Patrick, please correct me if I'm wrong, that if, if a child is in quarantine and when we get test and stay up and running and the child is rapid tested and tests negative and can go to class, they can't go home after school and, and they should not go to a Cub Scout event, for, for instance. Is that correct?
Yeah, um, basically, test and stay, um, goes against the DPH guidelines. Like honestly, like their guidelines say you should be quarantined. But again, there, I know that DESI's worked with some medical consultants that they have and feel like this is a good practice to put in place. Um, again, it re- it certainly remains to be seen. We'll see what the data, um, is as we move forward and implement this. But you are correct, like basically, the only place you're supposed to be going is to school. And what that would look like was, is, is if I'm a close contact, the first stop when I get to school would be in the nurse's office to do a rapid test that I have to wait fifteen minutes for the results. And then I would go to class. And again, um, we have right now one class at Memorial, one class at Francis Wyman. So that would look like about fifteen students, uh, at the nurse's office to start the day in each of those schools or some location, um, if we decide the nurse's office doesn't make sense. And if we start to have multiple cla- cases in a, in an elementary school, that could look like, you know, if it's two classes, it could be thirty kids. If it's three classes, it could be forty-five kids. So I just want people to think ahead about the logistics involved. It sounds great, like let's test and have people stay in school. We are a hundred percent for kids to be in school. We love having them back. It's been a good start. But there's some logistics here that I just want people to start to think about concretely 'cause it's not, um, as easy as it sounds.
Just a quick question then, um, if the child is participating in an after-school program and we're doing the test and stay, are they allowed to go to the after-school program or are they to go home?
Patrick, I'll take a stab, but I, I, I think, uh, technically, no. But because the after-school programs are in our buildings, we're treating them the same as if the kids were in school. Because the after-school programs are under the umbrella of another department at the state, not the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So, again, if we were following everything to the letter, then the after-school programs are considered separate. But it, that doesn't make any sense. So we'll, we'll treat the kids like they're in the school and we'll treat that like a school program.
Christine.
Hi, Patrick. I have a couple of points I'd like to make. Test and stay, test and stay is for any close contact, vaccinated or otherwise. Am I correct?
No, that is not correct. Um, the current guidelines, uh, tell us that if a student is vaccinated and having no symptoms, that they do not have to be tested.
Excellent. Okay, so I'm coming across a lot of, uh, people in the community that are very confused about all of this. And the confusion in part stems from the form that I understand isn't from us, but it's from the state. And so if a parent wants test and stay and they sign the form for that, the way the form is written, they're also consenting to pool testing, which I don't think we have any interest in doing. But parents don't know that and they think that they are agreeing to pool testing for their kids. Now, I, I, I know some people have tried just crossing that part out on the form. But the confusion is that, you know, they don't know why they don't know what to do. What are they supposed to do? If they don't want pool testing, which we're not gonna do anyway, I don't believe. But people don't like signing a form and giving permission for something, whether we plan to do it or not. So.
So, go ahead, Patrick.
Yeah, I, I've heard that, um, concern as well. Um, we were told at the, uh, overview by CIC, it's the Cambridge Innovation Center, which is the group that's contracted with the state to run this whole testing program. And, um, they've been told we have to use their form, or we've been told we have to use their form. And it does, again, it has all three of those options on there. We stated, again, in our November second, uh, September second update to parents, that we were only gonna do the, uh, the test and stay. We're not doing the asymptomatic testing, we're not doing pool testing. But I certainly understand people's concern that they're signing off for something that's on that form. But we're not, we've been told we're not supposed to modify those forms. I know the State Superintendent's Association is, um, talking to the commissioner about some of these concerns. Um, and that is one of the things that we've, we've addressed. And hopefully, um, there be, can be some middle ground. Because I don't, again, if we would teach kids in school, don't sign for something that you don't wanna do. And we're asking parents to do that. So it's not good practice and I understand the dilemma. We haven't been given an alternative at this point.
Well, can they? Their own alternative, write a note on it that says I only consent to, or, or draw a line through, or, I mean, people aren't gonna sign it if they don't.
No, I, I, I guess I would certainly say that we're not, we're not pool testing, we're not doing the other, we're just doing the test and stay is the only option. So I, again, I think I, we would, I would accept a form that had the other sections, um, crossed off.
Can I, um, sorry, to jump to the. I don't know if it's appropriate, but, um, I don't know if the school committee would ever wanna vote on, this is what we're allowed, we're doing, you know, just to make it a little bit more formal for parents to feel comfortable, to state publicly, like we've made a commitment. Um, I know my word, again, I don't expect that to be good enough. If there was some formal process we could do, um, at least for between now and our next meeting, we know we're only trying to get test and stay up and running. That's our only, uh, motivation at this point.
Okay, so on the kids that are quarantined now. Quarantine now because test and stay isn't available to them yet. Are they learning? Are they just home having a longer summer?
We are, um, I think the teachers have done a, a, a great job. Our tech department has done a great job. We're actually providing remote instruction, so, um.
Oh, but I thought you weren't allowed to.
We're, we're not allowed to provide remote, so we're, we're, um, but that's, that's what we're doing. So, um, so we, uh, delivered the iPads home to, um, to students, Patrick. And our tech department is, has created a protocol where, again, as long as we don't have, um, a huge number of classes out, we'll have the schools prepared to send iPads home with, uh, students. And then, uh, at the elementary level, um, it's just proven more effective and easier for us to have an entire class receiving remote instruction than having, uh, half the kids in and half the kids out. But our contract, contact tracing so far has really identified most of the class, a very large percentage of the class as close contacts. Again, we don't have as much, uh, space 'cause we have four hundred more, uh, elementary students, uh, in our buildings. So, Mrs. Monica, we are providing, the teachers are providing instruction, uh, remotely, um, even though, um, again, we're technically not supposed to do that as a primary, um, method of, 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 of schooling.
Is it absolutely necessary to have that software up and running before you begin test and stay?
Patrick, that's, um, we could, we could rapid test ourselves, I guess. I'm not sure if we have act, we have the tests, but I'm not sure, in order to participate in test and stay, I think we have to use the, 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 we have to participate in the state program. Is that, Pat, is that your understanding, Patrick? I'm, I'm, Chris, is that?
That's, that's my understanding, yes. I appreciate the question. And my only question, um, would be if we undertake this without going through the mandated trainings that, um, CIC is outlined and following their guidelines and, um, we do a alternative version. I just, uh, would want some legal, um, opinions on, um, you know, if for some reason, somebody we test that we say was negative ends up being positive the next day and there's some type of spread. I just, and then, just accountability, like I, I don't, I don't know, I just, I would wanna talk about that. I'm not opposed to it, um, but I just would wanna talk a little bit more about that.
All right, just let me.
Okay.
Um, I, I know that there are communities that are doing it, that are doing, uh, the quick test and letting the kids stay in school.
Uh-huh.
My own perspective, um, I'm not trying to jump the gun on what you should do, or what we should do. But I would just like to make the point that I am concerned it's taking so long to get that up and running. And I know it isn't your fault. But it, the thought of two classrooms of kids, the middle of September, being home, it, it just, it makes me crazy. I want those kids in school. So, it, just whatever you can do as soon as you can do it, um, I'm behind you. Thanks.
Yeah. We, we, we may need help.
What?
We said we may need help after we, um, break some rules, so that's all.
Um, I was just wondering, um, if we have restarted the dashboard that we were using last year and what, what's the situation on that? I don't know.
Um, as I mentioned earlier, on our, uh, on our district tab, there's a COVID page. We have started updating the, um, number of cases per week. So I think we have four in the last week. Uh, we had two at the high school and then two at the elementary school. And, um, so those numbers are being updated every few days. I, again, if you're in a school, if you're a parent that has a child in a school, you're gonna find out about any case in that school. Um, the other thing the state is, um, asking us to do this year, uh, again, this year, starting this week, is we have to report our, uh, numbers, our number of positive cases to the Department of Education.
Thank you.
I had just one question to follow up on, something that came up in the discussions, uh, that we're, um, doing remote for the, uh, the kids who are being quarantined, while they're being quarantined presumably. I know the unavailability of remote learning in the manner that it was last year, um, has, um, some people are disappointed in that. So I just wanna make the point, or if it isn't the point, I think we need to talk about it, that this remote learning that we're doing for this particular situation is certainly the exception to the rule. And I just don't want any expectation or snowball rolling down the hill that, okay, you're able to do it for this particular group of kids, for their particular situation. Why can't you do it, uh, for mine? 'Cause I'm not comfortable with my child going to school. So I just wanna be careful. I'm all for getting kids in school and I, and like Christine said, nobody won't, wants, likes the idea of kids sitting home you know, two weeks into the school year for, for fourteen days or whatever. Uh, so I, I'm, I'm okay with that. But I just wanna make sure that we are clear that that is a very limited exception to what is the current general rule for this school year.
That is an accurate description and this is, uh, for students who are out on quarantine. And, uh, remote instruction is not an option for a full-time school, uh, experience. And let's say the state were to change its mind. Remember, last year, just at the elementary level, we had about thirty teachers, thirty educators, working in a remote academy. We, we don't have those thirty, um, people around. So it's, it wouldn't be something we could start up, uh, as, you know.
I just wanted to reinforce that because once, you know, sometimes, once there's a little break in the dam, then it gets larger.
I have a parent question.
Go ahead.
Does the remote learning that's going on now count towards learning time?
Um, the, y- yes, and, um, Mrs. Monica, I, I, the state relented, um, sort of a little bit. And what they essentially said, that they wanted schools to provide work to students who were out as if they were absent. And if we could document that it was four hours, for instance, four hours worth of work, that, that day could count. My issue with that is providing a packet of worksheets, um, is not a very, um, we can do better. And I think we demonstrated that we can do better last year. So we're feeling like the instruction that we're providing now, um, is, uh, better than what the state is saying we should be doing in terms of having the time count. So, again, we, we're working our way through this. There's lots of confusion. I'm as frustrated as you are. I feel like I don't know a lot of things and they change, uh, quickly. So, again, as I just said, last week is when the department changed their contact tracing, uh, distance, even though we were following the six foot anyway. We didn't receive our rapid tests, Miss Monica, until Friday afternoon, four days ago. So we are, w- w- we're, we are, um, trying to implement as quickly as we can. And we started the school year. I think we had a really great start. I don't wanna lose sight of that. It's great to have all the kids back. I think we've seen, um, phenomenal compliance with our, um, mask requirement, which is why we're seeing kids in, in school. The cases that we're seeing seem to be coming from outside in, just like last year. And, uh, and we just have to continue to be careful. And hopefully, we won't have continued spread. All of these things work if there's a manageable number of students who are impacted. If we have six or seven classrooms out or, um, large groups of kids who need to test and stay, as Patrick was saying, it's not like taking a temperature. It, it takes probably fifteen minutes for the test itself, maybe another five minutes to process the paperwork and, and take the swab. Again, if there's thirty kids in a line, um, they're gonna be missing some instruction during, during that time as well. So, um, it just, it's, I, I hate to say this, but it's, it's gonna depend on, um, the number of infections that we are, that we're seeing. And, um, that's why all of our mitigation factors. together are so important for us to continue to execute. It's really important that parents do the health check on their kids before sending them to school, and if they are at all symptomatic, or if there's positive cases in their home, it would really make sense to keep your children home, have them tested before sending them, before sending them to school. The Board of Health is noticing fewer symptoms with positive cases, so it could be a headache, it could be a stomach ache, it could present itself differently, so, and again, with allergy season coming on, it's, it's just, it's just going to be something where we believe that rapid testing is going to become more and more frequent in the home, almost like homes have their own thermometer, right? You take your child's temperature, and maybe, we hope soon that you can take your child's temperature and give them a rapid test. We are asking the state, we being the Superintendent's Association, the logistics of making this work, we feel, would be most effective, and I think Susan Luminello also said this to you, Patrick, is that if families were allowed to do the testing during the week, so if your child's getting ready for school, you could do a 15-minute rapid test, negative result, you send them to school, positive result, you, you keep your child home, that would be much more logistically feasible. So I'm not sure why the state isn't allowing that to happen, except on Saturdays, where because students can test and stay, they need to be tested five consecutive days in a row. So again, the logistics, I think for test and stay, it might be five, and Martha, Ms. Simon, I could be wrong, but I think it's five. If there's a school event on a Saturday, which would probably be like an athletic event, if the child needs that rapid test before participating, the state is trusting the parents to rapid test on Saturday morning. So we, we're sort of saying, if they can test on a Saturday morning, why can't they test the rest of the week? Again, that's all theoretical and not an option right now. So, we are, we are working through it, again, it's going to take us a couple of weeks to get the test and stay up and running, it's not something that people should expect tomorrow. The date that we're working towards is October 1st, just as a date, and we'll keep the school committee apprised of our, of our progress, and, and I'm sure you'll hear whether it's working or it's, or it's not working.
Bob.
Sorry, if I could just comment, I'm getting some comments that your volume is tough to hear, though the web.
Webex volume is loud, so if you all could speak maybe three to five inches from the mic, and make sure that your volume is loud enough for the, the people at home, please.
Other questions or comments on this particular subject? Seeing none, Dr. Conti. Oh, I'm sorry, there is a hand raised, okay.
Beth Colburn.
Oh, I'm sorry, Beth Colburn.
Hi, everyone, I'm Beth Colburn, I have three kids in the district, and I have a question about this process, and I, I feel like you're going to say you're not sure, but, you know, test and say is not ready, there's. While our children are in school, so it's, it's unclear to me what happens if my child's class is shut down.
Beth, you kind of blanked out partway through that question, so I'm not sure.
Good question, could you just repeat that?
Yes, I'm trying to understand what would happen if my child's class is shut down. You know, D E S I says that remote learning isn't supposed to count as an academic day, but it sounds like the kids at Francis Wyman are getting remote learning. What would happen, you know, because it's, it's, this isn't going away, right? Test and say is not ready, and kids are still going to get COVID during all of this. It's just not clear to me what the process is.
Ms. Colburn, I'll, I'll do the best that I can, and if there's a positive and we close contact, and it, let's say we, it impacts two, three, five students, and those students are home, there may be a different solution than if we have 16 or 17 students in a class identified as close contacts. So, the first two cases that we've experienced at the elementary level, there's been enough, there were enough close contacts identified that the entire class could go out. We delivered the iPads to the students, because our elementary students aren't taking their iPads home, grade six through 12R, so that's a different, a different challenge, it's actually a little bit easier for us, but at the elementary level, we got iPads home, we're working on a quicker solution for getting iPads home with students, and, and then we are, we are providing, we're providing learning at home, and we, we hope that we're only going to need to do that, again, for, for another couple of weeks before we can have the test and stay up and running. Again, if the test and stay proves to be a viable option, depending on the number of students who are participating.
Right, right, it, it does have some variables. It still make it. Not like this perfect thing that will keep kids in school 100% of the time, so when they're home, it sounds like they're going to, like if you shut a class down, they will be receiving remote learning, and I don't understand how that's allowed with the D E S I guidelines.
Again, I think, yes, please, Patrick, help, help me out there.
Sorry, so, again, D E S I is telling us that kids that participate in, I think it's four hours of school activities on a day they're out of school, we can mark present. So their thinking, from what I've heard, is if we had 12 kids in a classroom that were there, and four kids at home from that classroom, and we were able to have them watch the classroom, I'm talking about elementary school now, that, and they were able to participate in at least four hours of activities, it would count. So, I'm willing to have the discussion with D E S I, and I know Dr. Conti is as well, why is it different if we have all 12 kids at home, and the teacher in the classroom doing the lesson? Like, I don't understand what they're trying to accomplish. So again, it's, there's not a good answer, I, I appreciate that, but I don't understand, like, how their, their explanations make sense here. So, that's, that's my answer to that, like, why can't we teach a whole group of kids at home with a teacher in their classroom, when they would accept us teaching two kids at home with 12 kids in the classroom, or whatever the number is? It doesn't make sense. So, we're, we're willing to have that discussion, we're having the discussions, I know behind the scenes, I appreciate the Superintendent's Association doing that work with the Commissioner, having those conversations, but our, our experience over the last year is, it's, it's slow, and this will come a month from now, when we knew we should have been doing it today. So we're trying to do today what, what we think they're going to tell us down the road.
Okay, I, I, I appreciate that explanation, if that does help, I, I understand how, I agree with you, like, half the kids versus the whole kids, like, remote is remote, and if it should count, it should count. I guess my concern is for all of the students who require support for their remote learning, who maybe needed a remote learning plan last year, how, is the school preparing for these students to have, to shift to remote learning, when maybe we don't feel like we're prepared for remote learning this year?
Um, Ms. Colburn, again, I.
I don't believe we're preparing like we were last year, so we are, so I, again, I'll, I'll certainly acknowledge that. We don't have a, a whole remote infrastructure, a whole remote school up, up and running, so we're doing this class by class. So we would, we would need to support students in their learning, and, again, I, I don't think this is right, but one of my colleagues I spoke to over the weekend was trying to provide as robust a remote classroom experience as possible, because the students are going to end up back in person in the classroom, and she was just marking them absent. So, they were providing the instruction and trying to comply with the state, because the, from her perspective, the attendance was less important than the learning the kids were going to do. And, and again, I, I understand how all this sounds, and I'm very frustrated not to be able to give you a clear and concise answer, and this is just, it's developing every couple of days where, where, where we'll make some adjustments.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
This also raises, for me, the question, I know because it was so much more robust last year, and everybody was engaged in this process of if we need to go remote, or if the kids were hybrid at the higher levels, or even the, the partial day at the elementary school, but for students on I E Ps, obviously there's additional prep to do remote learning. So I, I just think that I'd like to take this moment that this question raises, to make sure that our classroom teachers and our special educators are thinking ahead as much as possible, that if this student goes, had to go in quarantine because of a close contact, are we prepared to provide the, the instruction as best we can if that child has to be home? And, and I specifically feel like it's, I, I feel like, I don't want to downplay how amazing it was, what did get accomplished last year, and that all the teachers were in, in it, and I just want to, the pandemic isn't over, and I may say that again, more than once tonight, but if our children have to be home quarantined, then we need to be prepared for their learning needs as well. Thank you.
All right, if there's nothing further on this item, let's move down to, did, did we include the board health update as part of?
Uh, yes, Patrick had mentioned that.
Okay. So, school buildings, facilities update.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, Bob, the, the next two items really are, are yours, and then, we had an interesting conversation today, I know that you had a conversation with the, with the bus company, so I'm sure the committee would, might be interested in, in hearing some of that, so.
Sure.
So, again, if you do the buildings first, and then buses, and then the building committee, I think, if that's okay, Mr. Chair?
Yep. Again, thank you.
Thank you, thank you to the chair. I will try to breeze through the building update, because I think busing will be a bigger topic, but I'll gladly, you know, take any questions that are thrown to me. Since our last meeting, of course, we were in August, so we were getting prepared to have the buildings open. As you all know, our custodians, maintenance staff, everybody, everybody did a great job to make that happen. They're still continuing to work on, on processes, and what I mean by that is HVAC is definitely something that we're focusing on, which we committed to all of our staff and our students. So we've been doing a full assessment, as we did last year, going through all of those machines to make sure that they're working correctly. We are also doing measurements of the flows coming from the vents and the machines, and we're doing CO2 testing as well, as we did last year. We still have air purifiers, I don't want to say in every single space, but I want to say in all teaching spaces, and we did purchase more this year to backfill any teaching spaces where classes were remote and so forth. So we're making a strong effort to make sure that we have clean air in many air exchanges and fresh air in our buildings and our classes. Again, I can't thank the staff enough.
For the work that was done in the buildings, but I think you hear me say that every time I have a building update. I don't want to jump right to buses, but again, you know, the start of school is a little hectic every time, right? And this year is no different. We don't have the same protocols in place as we did last year, you know, so obviously we are looking at less than six feet in some places, but trying to maintain six feet as much as possible, when we can do that, we're wearing masks. So we have provided additional masks to all the buildings. We still have hand sanitizer available, we have P P E available, and we are distributing that and making sure people have access to that. Also to go on that is that we are providing lunches, especially in elementary settings, in the classroom. In high school and middle school, we're trying to utilize the cafeteria as much as possible. Any overflow is either in libraries and/or larger spaces such as classrooms or, or meeting rooms. So again, a little bit different than last year, but still a focus on, on safety. Again, I know, Martha, you have a question, I'm sorry, Ms. Simon, and again, I hate giving this answer, but I think we're seeing a lot of industrial delays across the board with a lot of projects we're having right now. The company that we're working with on the feasibility study, this is six individual companies, even though we're sourcing it through one person who's a project manager.
So we're talking now about the high school renovation?
I am talking about the high school feasibility study, which we are looking to put together to assess HVAC and the condition of the building, yes, the high school. The company's been very communicative with me, we've had to have a lot of follow-up conversations, a lot of follow-up in-person meetings. Again, this building, 40-plus years old, so they come in and look at something, they do some assessments, they have more questions. Again, staffing is definitely a concern in some of these issues, and timing is, is definitely an issue as well, too, so the delay is being felt by me, but also in the report that I promised that I would give to you all, so it's still in work, I just don't have it yet. Again, I think at this point, I probably want to take some questions, just because I do want to allocate some time to a bus conversation. I don't know if there are any, or?
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Kuna on the school facilities, building, building facilities? Anything online, Bob? Any hands up?
No hands.
Okay. All right, so we can move on.
Again, busing. Every year, busing is a big concern in this town, it's a main focus for myself and my office, especially for the first couple of weeks of school. We typically try to put our bus routes out, let them run for the first one to two weeks. We collect any requests, look at those changes, and of course, we use safety as a main factor for the order in which we look at making those changes. I think in this town, a lot of people would enjoy having more stops and having stops closer to their house, which we usually try to accommodate if possible. Please, I want to remind all the residents and you all that we did change the school's start times, and with the change of the school's start times, we have a 20-minute window between the middle school, and then our second tier, which is Memorial, Fox Hill, and Pine Glen, and then a 20-minute window to our third tier. So, again, 20 minutes, we all know, is not a lot of time, especially if we need to get from, say, Fox Hill to across the whole town, and then pick up students and drop them off at Francis Wyman. So, not only do we have the start of school year jitters, we're also trying to time that down a little bit, there's more people on the road, because buildings are open more around our town, so we're seeing more traffic, and just again, the new bus schedule learning, that's part of the story. The biggest part of the story, which was obviously made more public last night, but has been an issue for many industries, is that there is staffing issues with busing companies. It's not singled out to our busing company, this is statewide and even across the country, so much so that yesterday, the governor enacted the National Guard to come into play, and what that means is they're going to be enrolling National Guard to do training, get their C D L licenses, and then distribute them to bus companies. So, they're looking at the larger towns first, so that means towns like Chelsea, Lowell, Hayville, we'll see that first in the upcoming weeks, and then they'll roll that out to other towns as, as fast as they can. So what that means for us is, you take a normal year, where we have a little bit of struggles, and we try to sort them out in the first two weeks, we're now adding a delay in staffing, we're adding a delay in any parents or myself calling the bus company, looking for answers, we're seeing buses running a little bit late, we're seeing buses that don't have a driver for today, so then we have office staff from the bus company jumping into a bus, again, licensed drivers, but now if we're short-staffed in the office, we can't handle the phone calls. What that also means is if you are an office staff member who doesn't typically run this route, today you may be asked to jump on bus five, tomorrow you may be asked to jump on bus seven. All this sounds great to me, the problem is, the parents and the residents and the students are really seeing this impact. It's frustrating to them, it's frustrating to myself, it's frustrating to the administrator. It's frustrating to them, it's frustrating to myself, it's frustrating to the administration, and of course, it's frustrating to the bus company. It's not falling on deaf ears. We're trying to handle as many phone calls as we can. The bus company is hearing all of our phone calls and I think that the National Guard helping is going to be a big help for us. I'm sure there's a plug that if anyone is looking to become a bus driver, I know where there's some openings and we would gladly point you in that direction. And I'm not making a joke about that, I think the fact is, is that given a normal year about this time right now, we should have our routes dialed in, we should have kids on time, we should be picking up and making changes to our stops. We're not there. And honestly, I don't think we'll be there in the next two to three weeks.
So again, just for some numbers for the, for the committee. So I spoke with Rob Milliano this morning and she's our Director of Student Information who does all of our registrations. So between Octo-, uh, August eighth and September ninth, she registered over a hundred new students. So, so even as the routes are being designed, remember we're registering kids as, as we go through. Bob, you mentioned that we have eighteen full-time buses, you're all aware of that, and you mentioned today that we have fourteen full-time drivers?
We had fourteen returning drivers that were on our Burlington routes and two spare drivers returning. And the spare drivers now are being assigned to buses, but again, they're not, we're not a full eighteen staff every single day for our busing.
So clearly, some of the route confusion is because there's not enough drivers even to cover what are, would be our normal eighteen, our normal eighteen buses. So I think that's, that's important. There are some particular routes that we're looking at where I think the bus eighteen that comes through Lord Barron, I think we started with fifty-four, for instance, high school students right at that stop, Bob, and you said since that time, we've added seventeen more. So there's more than one full bus coming just out of Lord Barron. We talked about adding a nineteenth bus just to run from Lord Barron to the high school. The bus company has the bus, but they don't have a driver for, for the, for the bus. So I would love to come to the committee, even though that would be expensive, for a potential solution, we don't, we don't have that solution as an option. Why don't we just get rid of the bus company? Our bus company in probably, in our area, works with about seventy-five percent of the districts you mentioned.
Our bus company has been fortunate in recent years to acquire some other bus companies, so other names that you may have known locally, maybe under the umbrella of this parent company of our existing bus company. Again, I think the bus company itself is very responsive and communicative, given the circumstances. A little bit of a different story this year, but again, I think to Eric's point was that, you know, we've had some comments, again, if we're not getting what we pay for or we're not getting the service, let's dump the bus company. Not many options besides going back out to bid and then looking for another company that's in the same exact situation with limited drivers.
So those are some of the numbers and the, and the facts. So again, we appreciate the frustration, we appreciate that there are new drivers and we are, we are doing the best we can. There is, we talked about a potential, maybe interim step, and that's something the school committee may, may want to consider. It's not on the agenda tonight, but we would probably, if the problems continue, maybe an agenda item for, in, in, in two weeks. And what we did last year when we had, we could only use forty percent of our capacity on the buses, what we did was we didn't provide a seat for everybody. So we drew essentially a circle around a school and if you live within a half mile of that circle, you would walk, ride a bike, get to school yourself, and then we would transport the other students because of limited capacity. We don't have limited capacity this year. There are other limitations this year. So obviously, if we rerouted and created a half-mile circle around a school, we would have fewer stops and then we may be able to get the buses across town and work with the limitations of the company at this time with fewer stops and, again, the routes are just as long, but with fewer stops. So that was something that we discussed as well. Keep doing the same thing over and over again with the same routes without the number of bus drivers that we need. Again, as Bob's saying, there's, there's not going to be a magical fix to this until we have regular drivers and, and buses to do that. So again, the school committee would, I know that you want to have a seat for every child who wants to take advantage of that. We're just, we don't, we're not in a position to provide that now. And again, if I'm sounding like I'm being challenging to the company, I think the situation is challenging. I do believe the company is trying to do everything, everything that they can. This is, again, this is a national issue with trying to find bus drivers. We do believe the National Guard will help, but it just, they're not going to get to Burlington on their first tier of support will probably be in three weeks, four weeks, a three or four-week period of time. So in the meantime, do we modify our expectations and try to do a better job with fewer passengers?
And if I also may add through the chair, there's some other limitations that we're trying to weigh right now. Athletic directors through the MIAA have been contacted, so there is some busing limitations that may affect, you know, sporting events. That is something that they're unsure that they may be able to deliver on, again, not just our bus company, but bus companies in general. We're also having a discussion right now with late buses. We typically don't start late buses the first week of school and we wait until we get into our groove. Right now, our groove is being pushed back a little bit because, again, getting buses, bus drivers to take on the routes is not as easy as it has been in past years. So some of those may be limiting factors for after-school events. Obviously, the main conversation for today is definitely the day-to-day conversations. And I do want to just let all the parents know that your emails and phone calls, again, are not falling on deaf ears. We are definitely hearing them, reading them, trying to respond to all of them. There have been some canned messages that have gone out to answer a larger number of people. Please don't take that as an insult, that it's not a personal response to you. It's really that we're trying to deliver the message that we are up against some limitations right now and we're trying to work through them.
All right, thank you, Bob. Questions or comments? Not sure there's much to say about that.
Mr. Chair, again, my suggestion, should we put it as a formal agenda item at our next meeting? And if the issues continue, we'll offer, again, maybe some modified.
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea.
Modified routing, and again, that's not ideal either, but I'm not sure we can stay as we are if, if we're struggling.
While we do that and we can revisit it in a couple of weeks. Is there anybody online, Bob?
No.
On this issue? Okay.
No hands raised?
All right, then, the next one up for you is the Fox Hill School Building Committee.
I think this has been long awaited. We are scheduled the meeting for next week on Wednesday, September twenty-second. This will be our first SBC, which is a school building committee meeting. Unfortunately, there's not a formal agenda or game plan yet. We're going to use the time for an introduction. Also, we're going to use the time to go over where we are in the process, explain to everyone our deliverables and timetables, and of course, take some feedback, you know, from that group. But again, that'll be next week, Wednesday, September twenty-second at seven PM currently.
Seven thirty?
Oh, I'm sorry, seven thirty PM, correct?
It says seven in our agenda, but if you want to make it seven thirty.
The updated agenda is seven.
Okay. We'll, we'll get the posting, I'm sorry, we'll make sure that's accurate in then, in the updated agenda and then.
Is that going to be a WebEx thing?
It is going to be a WebEx, so we'll put the posting out with the WebEx information, we'll make that available to everybody. I will send direct invitations to everybody who is on the committee. I have already heard that, I think every night of the week, but particularly on Wednesdays, you know, especially as we get into budget season, that weighs and means potentially could be affected. So that's something that we'll just need to be mindful of in future meetings, so.
Okay. Christine?
Will you include all of us in the invitation, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
And also, I'd just like to clarify, Mr. Murphy, you as the Chair of the School Committee, are the Chair of the School Building Committee or is that to be decided in the future?
It's both.
Were you?
I'm, I'm asking the question, I think I know the answer, but I wanted to make a public statement, if you could just clarify who the Chair of the School Building Committee is?
I believe I am at this point.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted people to know, and so you will be responsible for the agenda?
Uh, yes, going forward, it sounds like there's not going to be much of an agenda tonight.
Okay. And, and how about facilitating the meetings, which is of course, we're going to have twenty-two people plus whoever else, you know, wants to come. Will you be facilitating the process or we'll ask Bob to do it?
At this meeting.
At this first meeting, Bob will do that. Great, thank you. Thank you. Because I'm looking forward to this getting started and it's not, not an easy process. Thank you.
All righty, any questions or further discussion on the building committee? Seeing none, moving on. Item six, communications. Dr. Conti, the BHS Student Handbook, second reading.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, second reading of the BHS handbook. We did receive some feedback that we incorporated into the, we, we made those changes. And again, with those changes, it's recommended the school committee approve the Burlington High School Student Handbook.
Can you go over the changes?
Um, I think the changes were mostly, were mostly grammatical. I, I can go over those, I don't think there are.
You don't need to go over grammatical ones, but are there any substantive ones?
Uh, there were not. I think there were some suggestions and Mr. Sullivan was going to come back. They required more conversation, so he was going to come back with, with some of those.
The, the particular change that I suggested was, it, there was a prior to distribution to newspapers comment about press releases and that we, that was to be updated to include all the social media that we release information to. So it was things like, that was a particular one that I had requested.
Okay. Chair will entertain a motion?
So moved. Second?
Moved and seconded to approve the BHS Student Handbook as submitted and modified. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero. That's approved.
Can we say hi to Mark?
Hey, Mark. Mr. Sullivan, did you have any comment on that or anything?
No, unless there are any questions, but I appreciate it.
Okay. Thanks for being here. Item B, out-of-state travel, Dr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Burlington High School Band will be participating in the Manhattan Concert Productions in New York City from April first through fifth. Students will perform at Carnegie Hall. Do you know how you get to Carnegie Hall, Mr. Murphy?
I do.
I can tell.
Practice, 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 okay. The cost of the trip includes buses, hotel, performance, onstage, clinics, recordings, and awards, a gala, award ceremony, and dinner, as well as a Broadway show. The total cost is the responsibility of the individual students and their families. There will be fundraising opportunities to help defray the cost. John Middleton will work with Jennifer Knight and Nicole Kasha to help support families who are having financial hardships. And again, it's recommended the school committee approve out-of-state travel for the Burlington High School Band to travel to New York City from April first through fifth to participate in the Manhattan Concert Productions.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion?
I just want to thank the music department for moving forward and trying to get the kids back on schedule. I hope these, back into these wonderful activities. I, I hope that these trips will happen and I intend to vote yes, so.
I have a question for Mr. Middleton.
Sure.
Can we go to? Can the school committee go to?
Uh, yes, as long as, are you vaccinated? Oh yeah, actually, New York City Mayor de Blasio has mandated that all, you know, people intending large venues and restaurants have to be vaccinated. So it's actually a point that our parents who like to come to the, to the performances and school committee members are more than welcome to come to Carnegie Hall, but you have to show proof of vaccination in New York City now, so.
We can do that.
All right.
Next one.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes five zero zero. There's a second, second out-of-state travel.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. The Burlington High School Chorus and Orchestra will participate in the World Strides Heritage Festival in New York City from March twenty-fifth through twenty-seventh. The cost of the trip includes buses, hotel, performance, onstage clinic, recordings, awards, and award ceremony, and dinner, as well as a Broadway show. The total cost, again, is the responsibility of the individual students and families and there will be, as mentioned with the last trip, fundraising opportunities to help defray the cost. And Mr. Middleton will work with Jennifer Knight, our Family and Community Engagement Director, and Nicole Kasha to help support families who are having financial hardships. Again, it's recommended that the school committee approve out-of-state travel for Burlington High School Chorus and Orchestra to travel to New York City from March twenty-fifth through twenty-seventh to participate in the World Strides Heritage Festival.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Comments or questions? Just like to reinforce that these are two great activities. I want to thank Mr. Middleton and the, his department for making this available to the students. It's going to be a great experience for anybody who's lucky enough to go. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes unanimously, five zero zero.
Uh, the next conversation, Mr. Chair, is the Burlington High School Spanish Exchange Program. Mr. Sullivan is here to answer any questions, but the high school is looking for school committee approval to announce their intentions of conducting the Spanish Exchange Program. The Spanish Exchange Program is in its fifth iteration. Burlington High School students will travel to Spain from February tenth through twenty-fifth. The students will miss six days of school. Students will live with a Spanish family and follow a student to engage fully in the Spanish way of life. The cost associated is sixteen hundred dollars per student. Students and families are responsible for the cost associated. Chaperones will be four American teachers and two Spanish teachers. The Spanish students will travel to, to the United States from April fourth through fifteenth. And again, it's recommended school committee approve the request to announce Burlington High School's intentions to conduct the Spanish Exchange Program during the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year. We've had some of these students come before the committee in prior years and many of them said it was the, their favorite event of their entire school career. So again, Mr. Sullivan is here to answer any questions from the committee.
Are there any questions or comments?
It's a great program. Thank you for, also for starting this up again, if hopefully all things go well, we can do it in the spring.
I have one question. What's the likelihood that COVID will interfere with this?
Um, I, I, again, I, I can't know that, but we have to do prior planning to make sure, so we'll plan as if and then hopefully we'll, we'll have the opportunity to go. All of these students would have the ability to be vaccinated, so again, we, we hope that Europe will remain open and they may have to show proof of vaccination, but again, and we, we need to start planning early.
Mark, do you have anything you want to add?
Uh, no, it's, the, the high school teachers do a fantastic job running, running this program. Like Dr. Conti mentioned, it's a highlight experience for a lot of students that get to participate. It's the kind of sister trip to the Italian Exchange Program that we do. Both are just extremely popular and as always, we appreciate your support with, with these kinds of programs.
Anybody else? It's been moved and seconded to approve the exchange trip to Spain. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that also passes unanimously. Financial update?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Nicole Kasha, I believe, is on, online, and she can review the fiscal twenty-one closeout and the revolving fund summary, that was in your packet. Again, Mr. Riggs, I, I apologize that I, I will include you in the future, and I, I will get you the agenda as we had in the past. We're, we're, we're transitioning, and again, I'll get you all the information ahead of time in the future.
Nicole's not here, so I'll do the report, so, again, the revolving fund.
Summary is, is in front of you, you can see the fiscal twenty-one, again, last fiscal year, which ended on June thirtieth. The revolving funds all have a, a positive balance, so the School Committee had some concerns. I think Ms. Kasha noted to the Committee with the school lunch account that she was going to front-load some of the, the transfer that the School Committee voted at their last meeting, so you can see evidence of that in the revolving account balance. And again, there are no other, there's no other revolving accounts that are negative at this, at this time. That's page one. Page two and three are the operating budget, and the operating budget shows a, an ending balance of about one point three five million dollars, which would be turned back to the town's general fund. I think Nicole and John D'Nizio worked to apply all of the federal relief dollars that were possible before the end of the fiscal year to fiscal twenty-one expenses, as Nicole had explained at our last meeting. I don't think they had finished the complete closeout by that time, but I think it is now currently closed out, and I think, again, we turned back, because of the federal relief, we turned back to over a million dollars. I don't want people to get the impression that we couldn't have spent the million dollars, I think the million dollars was allotted, but because we, we received federal relief, we could take some of our regular operating expenses and apply them to the federal dollars that we received. And then we try to spend federal dollars first and state dollars first before local dollars, and so the, the dollars went back to the town's general fund.
Chris.
Eric, this is kind of a tangential question, but we also have some money this year, correct?
Federal dollars this year, we do.
Yes. I'm wondering if we could use some of those, if we need to, to, to help with the test and stay program.
We'll certainly look at options in terms of staffing, if we need some additional support, and I think we, we're, again, Mrs. Monaco, I think it depends on the scale, but we should certainly be prepared to bring people in to help support us in that, and we believe also with contact tracing, so, and, and again, we could, I believe we could use those funds for that purpose.
Good, thanks.
And then the final page, as you're all are well aware and used to, you can see the middle column is spent as of June thirtieth, so that is the end of fiscal twenty-one, and the remaining budget amount in the accommodated count is roughly four hundred thousand, four hundred thousand dollars. So, and again, that is a town account, that money that, again, goes back to the town, and when we, as we spend our fiscal twenty-two dollars, again, that gets, will add, go back in, and the town will certify with what they, what they need to certify. So I just, again, don't want people to think that we have an extra four hundred thousand, we do not. That money gets turned back in on June thirtieth.
Roger, do you have any questions, I take it maybe that you didn't get this in advance, and I apologize for that, but any, any questions or concerns from your end at this point?
While, while we're waiting?
Perhaps not.
Mr. Riggs, I'm actually concerned, Dr. Conti, what's the process we use to make sure that this information does get out before our meetings to the Ways and Means Committee? And also, we had talked about some of the documents being available, I know it's, it's a difficult, so that's my, I have two-part question. So is there a process that just didn't happen, you know, and things happen sometimes? Or do we not have a process, so it's sort of each time we have a meeting, each time we have a monthly financial, there's no real sort of process by which our Ways and Means Committee people have a chance to see it in advance, or is it hit or miss?
Not hit or miss, I had to reconstruct some of the group emails because with Sharon's retirement, and I honestly just omitted Mr. Riggs. So that's been rectified, and so now he will get the notifications when you all get the notifications.
Okay, and then he can share with the Ways and Means Committee members and such, okay, thank you for taking care of that, yeah. And then part two of that is, in general, we've had this conversation before, we have conversations about information that people who are listening in don't know what it is we're talking about because they haven't seen it, and the difficulty with that is that if we, if it's something that we share, but it's not something we voted on, it's, it's not something that's official, and people can spread it and say, you know, this is what they did, when it may not be what we did. So is there some way, we did talk about sharing more of these documents, these drafts, with the public somehow, have we found any good solutions to that?
Again, Ms. Simon, the Committee can really honestly tell me what to do, I think we, the way I sort of think about it is the documents really aren't public until the Committee sees them first, but I'm sure there are plenty of things that we could, we could release publicly too. So this isn't national security here we're, we're talking about, so it would really be up to the Committee. We could make the packets available, but again, what I, my practice had been is, it's really not a, a, a public packet, again, until after this evening, but that would be up to the Committee.
Chris.
Eric, Sharon used to send the agenda along with those particular documents to the entire Ways and Means Subcommittee. That was her method of doing it.
Yes, Mrs. Monaco, I think we're talking about a couple different things, I have no problem sending the agenda and the financials to the Ways and Means, to the entire Subcommittee, that's fine. Again, I just need to build them into the, the email group, and, and, but for your regular School Committee meeting, if you want the public to see what you're going to talk about, again, I think there's some things where that would not be a problem, and maybe we can reference it, but again, my practice has been that after this meeting is when sort of the, the documents become public. So, again, if you all want to discuss that, I will do whatever you ask me to do.
Thank you.
I, I think this was an issue, through the Chair. This was an issue when we discussed the mask policy, where people didn't see what we were discussing, we didn't see that it had exemptions for medical and behavioral issues. Tonight, we're going to discuss vaccine policies, and other than us, no one has seen it in advance, and I think that's something I'd like to try to figure out. I don't know what, I don't have a good solution, or I would just propose it, I mean, reading this six-page document isn't going to do it, you know, for people, so.
My, my flip side, I guess, concern with that, Martha, is once we distribute something and say it's a policy that's not adopted, or is somehow modified during the course of the meeting, or during the second reading, now there's a, there's a document floating around out there saying it's a policy, some people will assume that that's our policy, when in fact it wasn't.
I agree, that's what I started with.
So I think our, our practice, I've, in my opinion, is, is the proper one. The reason we put an agenda out is to put people on notice as to what's going to be discussed and is going to come before us on the meeting. So I, I think there are opportunities for people who might have specific questions to, to call the Chair, or call the members, or to call the Administration for clarifications, and perhaps we can, you know, provide documents upfront if somebody had a particular concern. But I would, I personally would have a, I'd be concerned about a wide distribution of documents that haven't formally come before us, because there could be mistakes in them, or
Right.
or they're not the finalized forms, so I, I just don't think that's a good practice.
Well, and that's the question I was asking, I, I see a problem in just giving out all of our drafts. But I also see a problem with people being unable to follow our discussion and what we're looking at, and so I don't have an answer, but I'm putting it out because I'm hoping that maybe we can come up with some solutions to it going forward, and we'll see where we go. But I'd like people to think about that, and I see Mr. Kuna might have a solution, or at least something.
Through the Chair, I just want to comment to make sure. To make sure everyone is aware that on our website, we do have a directory for district policies. What we don't have currently is a repository to put drafts and other things, so if it's a voted-upon policy, it's under District Information, and it says District Policies, and when we did the face mask covering, anytime you went to the website, even today, you are still presented with a pop-up of the newest policy that says, here, click this link.
Yeah, I think.
I know.
No, no, I think, yeah, to the Chair, I think Ms. Simon's point is that we would have a more informed.
Public participation, if people saw the information, again, ahead of time, and Ms. Simon, I'll give it some thought, I, I understand sort of what you're trying to do, and then I'll bring those thoughts back to the full Committee, and we can, if it's something the Committee would like to pursue, then, then we can try that. I, I just don't have a real good answer for you right now.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate that.
And the only way I could think of doing something like that in, for your concern, is that, you know how you can do that kind of draft across every page? You know, so that you can still read through the document, I mean, you can do something of that sort if we really decided to move forward with that.
Chris.
Eric, it might be just quite simple to simply make the agenda a little bit more explicit on, on a few things. You know, like, we're not just going to do an update on, on the building project, but we're going to discuss whether or not we should have a mask policy, or, you know, just maybe a little more meat in the agenda, but nothing too difficult to do, just an idea.
Okay.
All right. Okay, sure.
For what it's worth, Lowell does release the packets ahead of time, if you want to give Dr. Boyd a call, he might have some feedback or some ideas for you. Sure, I'll do that. Thank you.
All right, seeing nothing further under financial update, we're going to move on to MOAs regarding vaccine requirements.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to make a suggestion, and because we have Darren here, hi, hi Darren, is on screen. We have two items in the agenda, we have a memorandum of agreement and MOA, and we also have a vaccination, a vaccination, excuse me, mandate policy. With the Chair's permission, it seems like they're really two sides of the same coin, and I, I think if you want to discuss both, both together, and if there are impacts to working conditions, then I just want to stress that these are, even if the School Committee sort of agrees to language or a position, we are still going to need to, Darren, impact bargain those, that, that position moving forward, is that correct?
Yeah, and Eric and I talked about this, and obviously, we want to do this as, due to the, you know, the, the, the safety emergency issues related to these policies, should the School Committee vote to adopt a policy, we want to implement them as soon as possible. But it's just important for the School Committee to understand that any of the policies that you may adopt that affect the working conditions of any of the employees in the union would need to be bargained or impact bargained with those, with those unions. The timing of that bargaining can be, can be different when it involves an emergency issue like this, I don't think we, we really need to go into those details. But just as long as you know that, if the Board, if the School Committee so chooses to, to adopt any policy tonight, it would, it would be subject to the bar, any bargaining that will need to take place with the unions.
I have a, I have a request that we separate the vaccine mandate and, and testing policy discussion from the MOA, memorandum of, of agreement, but I'm okay if we don't do it, but I would like to suggest that, is that something we could do in my mind? Again, nobody but us has seen this, but the document includes one section on remote and hybrid teaching and learning models, which I see as part of an MOA with our, our staff, and it has a section at the end on miscellaneous, which I also think is, are things that we've discussed with the Teachers Union and staff, and I don't see it as part of a vaccination policy. If people would rather leave them in, I don't need to have a long conversation, but I would prefer to, to have a discussion and vote on the vaccination mandate, and then any further discussion we need to have, the MOAs we've been doing and negotiations, so there's lots of that. This is only a piece of what our MOA would look like, so it's sort of taking little pieces of the MOA. If it's meant to reassure the teachers that these issues will be addressed, it, it certainly, that isn't certainly what I expect, that we would be addressing these issues. But last year, we did these, these aspects, the two I just mentioned, as part of the MOA for the school year. And I just, if there's a reason to integrate them into the vaccine mandate, then I'm okay with that, but I don't understand why we are integrating them, and I see.
Darren, you have your hand raised.
Well, first of all, I, I apologize for not saying it earlier, good evening to everybody, and thank you for, for having me tonight, and through the Chair. So I don't know exactly what documents you have before you, we did a couple different versions, one, Ms. Simon, is exactly what you had just referred to, we separated it out, so there should be a document that you should have that only deals with the testing, the vaccination and testing issues. Eric, do they have that version?
They were sent that version, I'm not sure if they have it in front of them.
The version that we were sent, number five, the section five is remote and hybrid teaching.
Yeah, there should be a version without that.
And the section, so I'm proposing that we discuss this document, and that section thirteen was miscellaneous, and I don't, if we take those two sections out, so if, I want to make a motion to, to have this conversation, but I, I would like to move that we discuss this conversation without what we got, this number five, remote and hybrid teaching and learning models, and the number thirteen, section miscellaneous. And that we have our conversation regarding that part of this information, and then in the future, we will have negotiations on the MOA with the unions and be able to bring that back in whatever format it needs to be.
Christine.
Darren, if we just talk about vaccine mandate policy, can we do that separately from the MOA and not have it part of the MOA?
Yes. I, I think, I, I think the MOA, the reason that is, that you even have it in the form of the MOA was really just showing you what sort of the end result would be, but it obviously, it was a good try by Eric and I, but we clearly missed the mark. I think what you were doing tonight is discussing a, a policy, we already have drafts in place that, that, that literally, that, you know, could, could have read Martha's mind, because it did exactly what she said, it does not have those sections in there. I think all you need to do to discuss tonight is whether or not the School Committee wants to adopt any type of policy regarding mandatory vaccination and/or testing, and if you do, what type of policy do you want to adopt? Don't worry about the MOA part of it, that will be taken care of. So, you know, and I apologize because it seemed like we thought we were trying to kind of expedite things, but, but I think it confused things. So I apologize for that. That's my fault.
Do we have a draft policy? Because the problem that we're running into is if we don't get the draft, if we don't set the policy and then move forward with the impact bargaining, we're putting off what we should be doing very quickly.
You do have it. I thought you had it in front of you. I'm happy to re, Eric, do you want me to resend it right now?
Yes, please.
Sure, I'm looking for it. I think I have it here as well.
Okay, I will, should I resend it to everybody?
Yes.
Okay, I will send it right now, and it's, it's almost exactly as Martha described it.
And I'd also like to ask the chair a procedural question.
Sure.
I also have some smaller questions and some bigger questions about the policy if we remove those two sections. Do we want to have that con, I, I actually think one of the issues is do we want to mandate vaccines as a condition of employment? Or do we want to mandate vaccines with the alternative being staff being allowed, including the, the medical and such exemptions? But the alternative is to have staff be vaccinated, required to be vaccinated or to be tested. And I think that's a core discussion to have separate from all the details in the policy. And I'd like you to, I'd like to suggest we have a procedural discussion.
I guess I, I.
And I, I'm just wondering, I, I wanted to make a motion to have this conversation, but, but I'm not sure if we're making a motion to discuss. All right, I, I guess I would like to make a motion. That we, that we vote to approve this copy, this version, this draft. But I would like to add a couple of things. On the second paragraph, so this is, should I do this or should we, should I wait to have all these discussions?
I think.
I'll ask some questions then.
Yeah, I, I think if we're gonna discuss and ultimately vote on the, on the, on the policy, any portions of parts of that policy that people want to discuss is certainly, I, I don't think taking, taking pieces out and discussing them and then, I think it's all.
So if I make the motion with this document that we can amend it to change it based on.
Oh, sure. I, I mean, at this point, there's nothing on the table and we're getting something sent over to us as we speak.
I emailed it to everybody. It is. It, it is the document you have in front of you without, but dealing only with the drug, the mandatory vaccination and drug testing issue.
So, I, I guess maybe.
I just emailed it to everybody about two minutes ago.
I have it.
I guess maybe a motion, Martha, would be to, a motion to approve the, the, the policy just to get it on the table, subject to further discussion before we vote it.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve this policy. Proposed, no, it's still, Darren, it still says it's a memorandum of agreement. No, it.
I know, but that, that it's, it's. You've been crossing towards memorandum of agreement. It's a, it's.
The draft of this mandatory vac.
It just was moving ahead, but it's fine.
Hold on, the proposed mandatory vaccination and testing policy as sent by attorney Klein on September fourteenth at whatever time, eight thirty-five. And I move that we adopt that, whatever this policy, subject to any bargaining obligations that may exist with any of the Burlington School District Unions. I'd like that to be included in the motion.
I will second it for purposes of discussion because I think there is a lot to discuss.
Yes.
Okay, so it's moved and seconded. So now let's discuss it.
So my first question is on the second paragraph. It says, oh, no, it's a different one. Okay, let's see if I can find the paragraph. Yes, protecting the health, safety and economic recovery of our community requires that we work together to prevent further spread of the COVID-19 virus. To date, the most effective tools for achieving this goal are widespread vaccinations and continuous testing. And I would like to add the word masking. So it would say widespread vaccinations, comma, masking, comma, and continuous testing. I'd like to propose an amendment to.
I'm sorry, which, which paragraph was that?
Second paragraph in the, in this document, it's not.
In the introduction?
In the introduction, sorry. The second paragraph in the introduction, starting with protecting the health, safety and economic recovery of our community. So I'd like to amend this document to add widespread vaccinations, comma, masking, comma, and continuous testing.
What happens when we don't have to mask anymore? Do we change the policy?
It, this is just describing that that's the most effective tools for achieving this goal.
Yeah, all right.
Okay, so to date, the most effective tools for achieving the goals are widespread vaccinations, and you want to add masking after that?
Yep. Because at some point we may need to.
And then, and then continue, so that was that the only addition?
That was this amendment that I wanted us to have a conversation about if someone seconds it.
Second.
Moved and seconded for that, to make that modification. Any discussion on that?
I would have put it at the end, but it doesn't matter.
As required, or, I mean, because it's, again, that's, it's like you're telling people they have to mask.
No, this, this is not a mandate paragraph.
It's more of a general comment.
It's a comment.
Would you be okay with that?
Can we have more than one?
Yeah, but at, at this point, we might as well do it one by one. Try, because somebody else might have an amendment that Martha doesn't have.
Right, I have a question.
Then it just goes through what I think. Let's put that change to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's approved, five zero zero. So that's approved.
I'd like to make a suggestion on the second one, the second paragraph.
Of.
Second section, scope?
Well, I'm looking at the one that Darren just sent us.
Number two, scope?
No, the, the second paragraph here.
For these reasons?
Yes. And I know that Lexington has one version of a policy and Wilburn has a different version of a policy. And I personally prefer Lexington's where testing is not an optional choice. We have a choice. We can require ma, we can require vaccination or testing, or we can require vaccination with, with, what do you call it?
Exemptions.
Yeah, exemptions for medical or religious.
But, but, but that's, that whole thing's addressed in, in, in detail further on in the policy.
But we need to address it here, too.
Yeah, so it says for these reasons, BPS will require its staff to be vaccinated or submit to weekly COVID testing. And I don't agree with that.
But if one of those exemptions apply, then we're gonna request that they, so there are gonna be circumstances where there might be weekly testing.
I see what you're saying.
But, Mr. Chair, through the chair?
Uh huh. Darren, sure.
Yeah, because I think you're, 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 you're keying on probably the most important issue that needs to be discussed tonight. And that is, and it, we, we drafted this way so you could have this discussion. There, there really are two different versions of policies being discussed. One is mandatory vaccination for all employees. And unless you qualify legally for a, a religious or a medical exemption, then you could be subject to termination for not getting vaccinated. The other option that's integrated into this, I mean, it's really just for your discussion, is for employees that do not have direct contact with students, there would be a testing option, which would allow them to choose to not be vaccinated if he or, or she so chose. And, and, and then as an option comply with the, the testing option. Some school districts have gone in this direction and some have not. I think the superintendent, I don't want to speak for him, wanted to kind of give you both options to discuss. But that really is the, the very key issue, and it is a big distinction because if you go with the mandatory vaccination policy for all employees unless they qualify for a legal exemption, you know, what you are saying is you would be subject to termination should you not comply with the vac, the mandatory vaccination. So that's obviously a big decision you need to make when you, when you are considering this policy.
My suggestion is. I, I, I agree, and that's obviously a big part of the discussion. If not, say for instance, it's the will of the committee that the Lexington version is, is adopted, then there, there would still be situations with weekly testing for somebody with a religious or medical exemption. So maybe then we'd, we'd circle back and modify this language to say, and if exceptions apply, then weekly testing.
Yeah, the exemption part is in there anyway.
Right.
It really is, we would change, we would change the testing language so that it would only apply to people who qualify for exemptions. The way it's drafted right now, any employee who did not have direct contact with students could opt into the testing and not be vaccinated, whether or not they, they qualified. So it would be, it'd be changing that part of it.
No, I, if we're gonna just go through the document and get to things as we get to them, then we can circle back and, and adjust this language accordingly.
I suggest we go to the discussion of whether we require this as condition of employment and whether it's for all staff or for staff who quote, work directly with students. I think those are the key.
Okay, so let's go to the pertinent paragraphs or sections.
Well, number three, policy starts with the discussion of all BPS employees who work directly with students will be required to provide proof of their vaccination status.
Okay.
And any employee that does not work directly with students who is not fully vaccinated or does not verify that they're fully vaccinated will be required to submit to and provide proof of a negative COVID test every seven days. In addition, all unvaccinated employees will be required to adhere to all Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and BPS Health and Safety Protocols at all times. And employees who do not provide proof of vaccination will be considered unvaccinated.
So I think the second sentence there is kind of the crux of the.
Yep.
In whether we, if we adopt it as written or if we modify it in accordance with the Lexington.
Who work directly with students.
So, let's have at it. Who wants to go first?
I'll go first. I think we should take out who work directly with students because whether you work in a classroom or whether you work in the building, you're bound to run into students at some point. And I just, I, I think the policy doesn't have any teeth without, without it being a mandate. That's just my personal opinion. I'm only one committee member.
Okay. Is the understanding, or is your understanding that the, the exemptions would still apply?
Oh, of course.
Martha?
Yes, I would be in favor of us having a policy with all BPS employees being required to be vaccinated. Again, like Mrs. Monaco said, we have staff all over the building and there's, you know, we don't know if they're gonna run into students. My top concern is the safety of our students and our staff. And although this could change, many of our students are not even eligible for vaccines. Vaccines are safe, they're effective and they're free. And sometime in this, somewhere in this policy, it even is gonna list when our first free clinic is gonna be. And I would encourage us to continue to make it as easy as possible. I know this is a really, it's a very difficult issue and I don't like to set things that are condition of employment. But we are in a public health pandemic and I think it's really important that we require all of our staff to, to be vaccinated.
Who else? Carol?
This is a question. Do we have any information about what percentage of staff is already vaccinated?
Not precise information, Mr. Foss. We've asked staff to let us know to turn in proof of vaccine because it assists with our contact tracing primarily. And so people have been turning in evidence of that to the nurse's office. The Board of Health only accepts paper copies of the, of proof of vaccine because you all know if someone, if we have proof of vaccine on file, then we don't consider that person of close contact, so we can sort of pass, pass over them. So we're in the process. We, we've received quite a few, but I don't have an exact number for you tonight.
Even like a rough number, just anecdotally, every teacher that I work with or know has been, has gotten the shots and just curious if.
I, I think our educators are.
The numbers gotta be pretty high.
Yes, our educators are by and large significantly vaccinated. I would say well into the high ninety percents. We have not received proof of that from all ninety-plus percent of, of our educators.
Any other questions or comments on this particular issue? Seeing none, there is a motion on the table to modify the proposed policy such that it reads that the, the vaccine is mandatory for, for all employees regardless of whether they work in close contact with, with students.
I can certainly make that change throughout that time.
So, yeah. And we've, we have an amended, a motion to amend, and it's been seconded?
It's been made and seconded.
I think you seconded it.
I probably did.
So if there's no further discussion on the particular motion, I'll put that to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes five zero zero.
Can I just make a, a brief comment?
Sure.
A little over a year ago, my husband got COVID and I got COVID. And I have very strong feelings about this whole thing because I don't want any child who is not eligible to be vaccinated to go through what we went through. As Martha said, the vaccine is fully approved, it's safe, it's free. And we need to protect everyone who works in the schools and all of the kids.
Okay. So the proposed policy, we've amended accordingly, and Darren will be able to backfill the language throughout to accomplish that. Are there any other aspects of the proposed policy that people either want to talk about and/or modify?
I had a question on.
Catherine.
Yeah, on the weekly testing requirements, section seven, and the new document you sent out. And again, I, I, you know, just me understanding that someone who gets the second dose, it takes two weeks before you're fully vaccinated. And there's verbiage in here saying that you do not have to be tested as soon as you get that second shot. I would think they would need to test for the next two weeks after the second shot. And then they don't have to be tested.
Mr. Chair and Ms. Bond, I think some of that language would be modified given the committee's position that everyone would need to be vaccinated.
Right.
I think what the committee may want to do is discuss a, a deadline for when we need to receive proof of vaccination and how long you want to give employees to comply with, with the policy.
After that date comes and goes, the only ones that'll be getting weekly testing are people with exemptions that have been approved, which will be a relatively small number.
Correct, that's the way I'm, I'm kind of trying to start to draft it right now. That whole.
Oh, that, yeah, that. Who do not work, who do not work directly with, right.
Um, what's a reasonable, are we working on October first? Is that a date we're shooting for? Is that reasonable?
What's the date, Tom?
Sorry? October one, uh, what's, what's a reasonable, I mean, how much time do you need to? Um, I mean, as a practical matter, that's, that's less than two weeks away, so if somebody was not vaccinated, even if they got their first.
Couldn't get, couldn't get their first by October first.
Yeah, I, again, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I was looking for two things. So we need, for the people who are vaccinated, we need documentation that they've been vaccinated.
Right.
And again, would October first be a.
That seems like plenty of time for that.
A fair date for that? The answer is, I believe that is the case. I think for, um, folks who are not vaccinated, um, I think maybe we should give them a deadline to receive their first vaccination. We are, we are hosting sites and then honestly, once they receive their first one, then it's gonna be three weeks plus two or four weeks plus two. So, so I think that, uh, it wouldn't make sense to give them a deadline, uh, ahead of that. Um, again, unless you want to put them on leave until, until they're vaccinated, so.
When's the first vaccine clinic?
We already had the first one. I'm not sure exactly, uh, when the second one is, if, um, um. Let me see if I can find out. I knew you were gonna ask, so let me try to find out, um.
You could do, uh, the date of the vaccine clinic, um, whenever it is.
What if we, we ask people to receive their first dose by October first? Because people can, don't have to wait for our clinic, it's free.
Right, right.
If they go to CVS or wherever, or their own doctor.
Circling back to the, um, the impact bargaining part of this.
Yep.
How long, Darren, does that impact, impact bargaining, uh, process take?
Well, in my opinion, and I've expressed this to, um, uh, I've expressed this to the, the union on previous, uh, similar issues. Due to the, the, um, the public health crisis that we're in, uh, and, and especially with the, the, the variant rising, uh, this is a type of exigent circumstances that would allow you, in my opinion, to implement, uh, this policy as soon as possible. Uh, and you would then need to impact bargain even after implementation. Um, just to be clear, normally, if there was not an emergency or an exigent circumstance, you would typically need to bargain the impact prior to implementation, and that applies to almost every type of change. The only exception is the one I just described, is that when there's an exigent emergency circumstance like this or something that's required by law, you still have to bargain it, but you can do it after implementation as opposed to prior to implementation.
Okay, so we don't have to take that into account. When we decide when, what kind of a date you wanna put on for deadline, so October first or the shot by October?
Although, um, Mr. Foss just looked it up and the next clinic is on October fourth.
Okay.
Um, do we want to just go with October first or do we wanna say October fifth so people can go to that clinic if they choose?
I think that's fair.
Yeah. So, and I, but then I would say October fifth.
Okay.
Because the clinic's in the evening. Right, but it goes back to my question again, for those who are not vaccinated. Do we wanna require them weekly testing until the vaccine is fully effective? That's what I was trying to state.
Got it, yes.
Because it, it, it'll be another three, four, five weeks after that.
It's right, it's at least two weeks after the second vaccine. Um, so I don't know if we wanna add that or not, the, the weekly testing up till that point.
Can we vote this without the language being cleaned up, Darren?
Yeah, you, you could, you, you could and then ratify it once you have a clean version in, in front of you at the next meeting.
The motion is, you know, to, to ratify it as amended for a discussion at the meeting and the, the.
Okay.
The cleaned version will come through.
Right, but.
Um.
So, um, but, but, let's focus on the dates for a second. O- October fifth will be the date we wanna set for the first shot for those who have not yet received a shot.
Correct.
Um. The, um. What was the other?
The weekly testing up until they're born.
Okay, so October.
So October fifth is the deadline if you have not. To get your first shot.
To get your first shot, correct. Um, now, how about weekly testing? Do we wanna put that system in place until?
Until two weeks after the second shot, when it becomes legit.
So there's, there is lai-.
There is language here?
But that, but that might be a policy that we're gonna have to keep going, you know, somebody with an exemption is never gonna get a shot. So we might have to have a, the weekly testing policy might go on to add infinitum.
Oh, yeah, the weekly testing has to go on.
Yes, sir.
I, I've already sort of, so what I'm drafting is the only people that are gonna be subject, you know, in the future to the testing are people that qualify for the legal exemptions. If, if, just based on the discussion, I can easily add that the testing would apply to people who are not currently vaccinated or have not completed the vaccination process, you know, through the time of two weeks, I guess, post their second, uh, vaccination shot. And that, that's easy language to add, that's what the school committee chooses.
Or October fifth.
Right.
Yep. Anyone who's not fully vaccinated would need to be tested every seven days until two weeks after the second. They receive their second vaccination. I, 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 I'm not saying that's how it should read, that's what I think, um, one of the committee members suggested.
Good, and there's.
Are you comfortable with that?
Yes. And there's language here also that, um, BPS will offer weekly COVID testing free of charge at each of its school buildings with information about how that would happen. Is that still, that's something that we are able to do, Dr. Conti? That we're gonna offer the free testing for, for this, anyone who's in the process of getting vaccinated or who has a legal exemption afterward, that we will offer this weekly COVID testing free of charge at each of the school buildings, um, et cetera. And then there's information about teachers and non-instructional and testing being conducted in a way to eliminate or minimize disruptions to the learning student, the student learning environment and student medical needs. And, uh, which tests to use, that kind of thing. Is that something that we're prepared to do?
Um. I think I would've said with a choice, probably not, but now that you've eliminated the choice, we should probably have very few people who would qualify for the exemption, so, um, Ms. Simon, I think we, we could provide that testing service.
Okay, it, it's, it's the language that you offered us, so that's what I'm working off of. Um, and that it also, employees may choose to get tested at non-BPS sites, uh, but the same testing requirements would apply. And, uh, there's stuff in here about contact tracing, um, et cetera. So, okay, I just wanted to make sure we were still gonna offer that.
So, is, is that something that is gonna be included or taken out?
Are we gonna leave that in?
Again, the free testing, Martha, is that what you're discussing now?
Yes.
Um, again, Darren, I think with the vaccine mandate, um, if we're not gonna be testing employ- we're not giving employees the option, I think we should have very few people, um, who are exempted from the vaccine who would require testing every seven days. So I, I said we should fulfill the commitment to then test those people.
Okay.
Bobby has a question.
Bob? Through the chair, just for information comment, please. Um, in regards to Mrs. Bond's comment on, um, the two weeks after the second shot, the clinics that Burlington is offering, offering, um, if we went within October fifth date, um, it would be six weeks until the next clinic, um, that we offer would be November fifteenth, and then if there's a two-week window after that.
That's too long between shots.
Right.
What are they doing for second shots?
So we're offering a clinic on the fourth and the twenty-fifth, but that's only twenty-one days.
Oh, that's the Pfizer. Pfizer is twenty-one days.
Um, we're offering two different versions, I believe.
No, we, again, Bob, with looking at the high school cafeteria, we have a clinic October fourth and a clinic October twenty-fifth.
So that would be three weeks apart.
We have a clinic, uh, November fifteenth and then a clinic December thirteenth.
Right.
So another.
Okay.
So if they give Pfizer, then, then that's set up that way.
Yeah, so then two weeks after the twenty-fifth, if people got the shots there, two weeks after the twenty-fifth, they would no longer need to be tested directly.
Right. But I think what Mr., excuse me.
And people don't necessarily have to use our, uh, clinic either.
Right.
Correct. Correct.
And through the chair, and from what Mr. Kean is saying, if somebody, you got the Moderna or not, it, they might not, they might need the two weeks after the November fifth date if they should use our clinics.
They wouldn't qualify.
But they would still be eligible for the required weekly testing that Mrs. Bond is proposing, which I agree with, until they're two weeks after their second shot. It doesn't matter what the date is because we've asked people to get their first shot by October fifth. It's, yeah, and then until two weeks after their second shot or if it were Johnson and Johnson that they got somewhere else, two weeks.
Generally, you go to the same place if you're getting two shots. So that, that must be why they're set up exactly three weeks apart.
Mm-hmm.
These are Pfizer.
Yeah.
Right. And we might wanna put some kind of, and, uh, I mean, theoretically, if somebody wanted to game it a little bit, they get their first shot, they can do their, their weekly testing until after the second shot and just never get around to taking their second shot. So I think there's gotta be a.
No, they have to provide documentation.
Right, but they're saying, I haven't taken my second shot yet.
Well, we're not gonna.
So I just put a, a, you know, on it before, you know, an outside date of.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
You wanna put a date for the second shot?
That provision, that, 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 um, option of getting the weekly test while you're waiting for your second shot and then two weeks thereafter, if a week bef- the day before my second shot and I don't wanna do this, I say, oh, jeez, I'm sick, I, I can't get it, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna postpone it. And then all of a sudden, it, it's January and Feb-, you know.
Well, why don't we make a, a, a deadline for, um.
That's what I was saying.
Completion of the vaccine.
The end of, you know, mid-December. I don't pick a date that, some outside date that's gonna cover all of the.
December first.
December first, yeah, which should do what I would think.
I, I would be more comfortable if we had Susan Lomello tell us that that makes sense, you know, or, or something.
If you're gonna have it by the fifteenth, I mean, by the fifth of October.
Yeah. Yeah.
The Moderna shot, I believe, is four weeks between shots. So if somebody got Moderna on the, on the fourth.
Yeah.
Or even the morning of the fifth.
Yeah.
And you added four weeks to it.
Yeah.
Then they've gotta be done.
Right. So do we wanna say December first then if we want a date?
Because eight weeks, right?
Yeah, it's, that's kind of a long time. Maybe we should go to.
Right, but again, I, you know, somebody's sick, somebody's, something comes up at work, you know, whatever.
That's good.
Is there any other changes of substance that anybody wants to make to this proposed policy?
Um, I have, so I have, of substances, there are a few places where there's no dates listed that I just wanna make sure we get those dates in, and I think we discussed most of them. Okay, um, and is that something that we could vote on at the, on the twenty-eighth when it's put together, the dates?
What are the dates? Do we need them?
Well, they, it says effective what date, they, all BPS employees are required to provide proof of their vaccination status.
Once the data disagrees.
So what date are we now saying by?
October fifth, the first shot in.
Okay. Yep.
Sometime thereafter, depending on what kind of shot.
Okay, so, Mr. Klein, can you, uh, include those dates under the section three policy? Effective October fifth, uh, for, for, proof of vaccination status or first, of their status, which would be, uh, first shot or complete, and then put in that the complete one we decided we wanted by December first, is that?
The full completion.
Full completion of vaccination or whatever. I don't know how to word it, but.
Think you muted, Darren.
I, I have the October fifth date.
Okay.
But I thought the decision was that, that they would be tested until two weeks after their second shot. I don't, I don't think, I don't know if you'd, if they have to be vaccinated by October fifth, I don't think you need to specify a date of the second shot because it would, it would be, second shot would have to be either twenty-one or twenty-eight days after, right?
I'd be okay going with that.
Okay.
Patrick Larkin.
Patrick.
Uh, thank you to the chair.
To the chair, my understanding is, um, that the clinics we've been holding, we've been giving the Pfizer vaccine, which again, um, if, unless I missed it, is the only one that's fully approved by the FDA. Um, just to be clear, J and J, we, I don't even think we should be discussing at this point. And, uh, just to make it clear, I mean, that's my understanding, the clinics we're running are the Pfizer vaccine, which is the one that's been fully approved by the FDA at this point.
Thank you, that's awful.
And, and, um, the one thing I would just say, I know, I'm very clear on the October fifth is the deadline for getting your first vaccination. But I think you wanna make the policy effective, uh, really, it, it sounds like as soon as possible because you wanna be able to inform your employees of this as soon as possible. So I don't think you wanna make the policy effective October fifth. I think you wanna make the policy. Yeah.
And then the other date.
Oh, go ahead, Mrs. Bond.
I just think the December first date is kind of far out.
We just got rid of it. We didn't include that.
Oh, we didn't include that?
No, we're just, we're just gonna go with the two weeks after the second shot.
Oh, good, good, okay, thank you.
I also just wanna make it clear, though, that if, if someone chooses to go get the Moderna shot or Johnson and Johnson, they're free to do so. They don't have to get the Pfizer shot. I just wanna make sure we make that clear, that the reason we're, that we're discussing Pfizer is because it's fully approved. And, and that's the one that we're offering, yes. And the other, uh, through the chair, sorry. The other place that the, this current issue says access to includes, oh, actually, the second version doesn't have access to. Uh, does this final version have access to, I guess not. Uh, let me look at the final version we got here.
Are you talking about the access to vaccination issue section?
Yeah, yeah.
That's section six?
Uh. Section six, there it is, okay. So that one, if we keep that language, requires us to put in the dates of those clinics. I, I, I don't know if it's necessary, but, and it should specify the Pfizer vaccine. Not, so if that, uh, Mr. Klein, if you can clarify, add those dates, or do we not need to include it?
I would not include, only because.
You, you only need to include it if we're gonna be providing it. If you're gonna be having clinics, it sounds like we are. So we'll put the right dates in and we'll put that the clinic will be offering the Pfizer, to the extent, i- if, if I have Moderna listed, obviously, we would take that out.
Registration information will be made available to employees.
Um, and BPS employees covered by this policy may opt to receive any approved vaccine at other locations of their choice. So that is written into the policy, which is what Mrs. Bond was talking about. Okay, and I have, um, two typos I would like to just alert us to, um, on section. Under exemptions and accommodations requests, the third bullet point says an explanation of, and I believe it should say, an explanation of how the employees' religious beliefs prevent vaccination. Do you see that, Mr. Klein? On the third. Oh, okay, the, the third.
What section is that?
The third bullet point. Under exemptions.
An explanation of the employee's religious or religious type beliefs.
Yes, section ten.
Or how, okay, I see.
And then just below that. Oh, wait, this may have been, no, under privacy and confidentiality, all employee vaccination information and other individually identifiable medical information that's, needs to be corrected, shall be maintained in a confidential manner as required by law. And all information will be kept separate from an employee's personnel file. So you saw.
The typo is medial versus.
Yes.
Thank you.
And then there's a date at the end, the effective date, so that would be tonight. Is that what we said, Mr. Chair?
Darren, one question for me on the, the language about the two exemptions. Is this, uh, I know some of them involve federal law and, and things of that nature. Are these boilerplate clauses that cover? I guess what I'm getting at is I don't fully understand what the, what situations satisfy a request of exemption, and I'm sure there are people that do know that. So we don't have to, we don't have to get into those details here. That's, is that a federally defined standard that has to be applied?
Yes, so thi- this is what the laws. Regulations are requiring, so that is boilerplate language. Obviously, with a lot of this being new, there's going to be different challenges and different arguments being made. There's not a lot of precedent right now on this, and it's developing. But this is the boilerplate language that, that's being used in, in most places.
And Mr. Chair, I would like that section, so that people who are listening understand that there are exemptions and accommodations. The requests are, are possible employees who are unable to receive an approved COVID-19 vaccine due to a medical condition or who object based on a sincerely held religious belief, may request an exemption by completing and submitting a request for accommodation form and accompanying documentation to the BPS Human Resources Department. Upon receipt of all required documentation, the Human Services Department will begin the interactive process with the employee to determine if an effective accommodation is required or available. And all requests for exemptions will be considered on a case-by-case basis. And there's more information also, but I wanted to make that public.
Okay, is there anything further on the proposed policy? There's a motion on the table to approve the policy as amended through our discussion this evening.
Do we want to go back to your original question, Mrs. Monaco? This allows for the weekly COVID-19 testing for people who have received a medical or a religious exemption?
That wasn't my question, was it?
They still need the weekly testing. Yeah, anyone who's exempt for medical reasons still needs to have the weekly testing, and we're providing it for them. So I think this is.
But Darren, can you clean that up so that it doesn't look like a choice so much? It's anyone with.
Yeah, no, no, absolutely. What you had before you was written with that choice option. All that will be taken out and cleaned up, absolutely. The only people that will be, that will be required to do the weekly testing are ones that qualify for an exemption. There won't be any, there's no option, voluntary option for that. If you qualify for the exemption, then you will fall into, then you will have to be weekly tested. That's the way, that's the way the policy will read, once I've made those changes.
Thank you. Mr. Kuna, somebody has a hand raised? Yes, Shane Feria. Shane Feria? Hi, Shane.
Yes, hello. Good evening, thanks for fielding my, my inquiries here. I am not a teacher in Burlington Public Schools, but I am and have been employed as a track and field coach for the past four years for Burlington High School's girls' track and field. And I just wanted to say that I don't believe that you are in any position to mandate vaccines, both on a legal ground and due to what is, to me, ignorance of the actual science and what is happening in the world. The FDA approval for the Pfizer vaccine is smoke and mirrors. If you were to read the actual documentation from the FDA, what the approval actually says is, it is the approval of a vaccine that is interchangeable with the initial Pfizer vaccine, meaning it's exactly the same. The only difference being it is now named Comor Nadi or Comor Nadi, I don't exactly know how to pronounce it. This is just for marketing purposes. The approval for the vaccine, for the Comor Nari was not for the approval of like, this is safe and effective. It actually was an approval for Comor Nari to be released and for studies to be undertaken on children to be completed between two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four. So first of all, the FDA approval thing that is being touted as dogma right now is just a headline. If you read into the actual documentation, you will see it is smoke and mirrors. It is not what you believe it to be. And it, it really makes me upset when people say things like, safe and effective. You don't know that. There is absolutely no way, what is it, eight, nine, ten months into this vaccine being out? There's absolutely no way that you would know if it is safe and effective. There's been absolutely no opportunity for long-term effects to be figured out. That usually takes years, upwards, eight, nine, ten years. And you want to mandate this as safe and effective? You simply do not know. There is no way of knowing. The past meetings about the masks too show that you were ignorant on the topic. You want, you say masks are safe and effective. The width of a human hair is one thousand times wider than a COVID-19 particle. Can you fit a piece of hair between your face and a mask? It's just blowing my mind, what is happening? If you look, if you look in the world, I'm sorry, if you look in the world.
I'll let you finish, just let me jump in.
Sure.
I, and I should have said this upfront, and I just didn't think of it. We do have a policy here. For public participation, a, a limit of three minutes, so frankly, I wasn't measuring when you came in, and but obviously, you've been talking for a while, so I just wanted to put people on notice of that. Feel free to, feel free to finish, finish your thought, and, and, but I, I just wanted to move along.
Twenty-eight seconds, okay. I'd like to reclaim my time for whatever that part was.
I, I paused it.
Yeah, you got it.
Thank you. I just want to say, it, it pains me greatly here in Burlington, right next to where the Revolutionary War started, that we see constitutional rights being so haphazardly eradicated. Ben Franklin once said, "Those who would give up essential liberty to purchase a little temporary safety deserve neither liberty nor safety." In this instance, liberty is being given up for the illusion of temporary safety. I hope that you look at the actual documentation, the actual science, and not rely on anecdotes before you make this pivotal decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else, Bob, with hands raised? Okay, is there any further comment, conversation, discussion, questions from the board? Currently, before the board is a motion to adopt the policy that presented to us as modified in our discussions with the prime modification being to remove the option of getting weekly tests as opposed to taking the vaccine for, for staff members who don't interact with children. That was modified to make it essentially a requirement that all employees, other than those who have exemptions that are approved, must get the vaccine. So that's what's before the board right now, adopting that policy. It's been moved and seconded all in favor of that policy. Say aye.
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 Opposed, that policy passes five zero zero. Darren will make the appropriate modifications and we'll circulate the final, the final draft.
Mr. Chair, just, just a reminder for the minutes that Ms. Simon's original motion did, did, uh, did say the policy was subject to any bargaining that, that needs to, to take place.
Correct.
Okay.
Just to reiterate that, did his impact bargaining? For all of our, of all of our units. However, per council's statement, we, we do have the ability to implement it immediately. And then he will, he will work with the unions as far as the impact bargaining process goes.
Thank you.
Do, do you need, do we have to make any kind of a finding, Darren, that it's an exigent circumstance? Or is that just, is that obvious by its, on the face?
I, I don't, it doesn't require.
No, okay. Thank you. Okay, good, thank you. So if there's nothing further on the, the MOAs, I think we've all agreed that those are going to be handled by, by the administration and Darren going forward. If there's nothing further on this, on this matter, I'm going to move forward to the next one, which is use of school facilities after hours. Dr. Conti.
Again, thank you, Mr. Chair. This was a request for an agenda item. We have received a request to use the facilities, which we have not permitted, Bob, during the month of September. While we sort of tried to figure out the type of spread we would see and what's going on, we wanted to limit access to outside groups into the, into the buildings. And so that's where we are. We said we would reconsider it after September. I know some of you have received requests from some of our youth programs who use the facilities in the winter. And, and again, this, it wasn't meant to be a year-long restriction. Indoor sports, I think, have a higher level of risk. We're asking our athletes, even in the fall, who are indoors, to wear masks. Our volleyball team, we're asking spectators, we're not limiting the number of spectators, but we're asking all in attendance to wear masks. So, uh, again, I don't have anything against making the buildings available as long as the people who are utilizing the building are following our protocols. And I'm imagining that everyone will be masked indoors. And I still really wanted to consider this month by month. Again, I just, I don't know what the next two weeks are going to, are going to look like. But I also, again, I don't want to, I want to make the buildings available if possible. So that's really the conversation with the committee. I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying no, like absolutely not. But if people are using the facility, I really want them to make sure that they're following our, our safety protocols.
Okay, thank you. I received an email from Brian Poopa, who's in charge of the, the youth basketball program here in town. And I assume Brian was going to be present tonight. Is that you, Brian?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I am on.
Okay, um, I, I circulated your, your email to all the, the committee members, so they've read your email and the concerns. But the floor is yours if you want to address the board on behalf of your organization.
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity, Mr. Chairman. Brian Poopa, Ken Brier with Lane.
I am the president of Burlington Youth Basketball Association. The Burlington Public Schools has always been a great partner. They've been always super cooperative to Burlington Youth Basketball. Unfortunately, we've come to the point where we can't operate our league without some sort of commitment, knowing that we'll be able to have access to the gym's care in town. The reason I brought this forward was, back in January, I had approached Mr. Conti, Mr. Kuna, relative to a COVID-19 safety plan. I wanted to do a, a sort of a test program for other organizations in the community, and they didn't feel it was the right time, which I completely understand, and I didn't push issue. In June, which is our normal procedure, we request, request time for the following year. And the answer I got was, hopefully in August, we'll get back to you. And now in September, I am, once again, requested, and the answer was, we can't do it right now, but maybe by January first. We're at the point, we usually start by November first, and we really need to know if we have these facilities. We're in discussions with other towns. I know Wilmington is allowing their student athletes to use the facilities after hours. I know Woburn is as well, as well as other outside organizations. And this isn't just basketball, this is other youth organizations, scouts and sports. And we just think that there's a lot going on at the schools. I, I know the high school had volleyball games and, you know, people were allowed to go in there. We think that we can safely run a basketball program. We would comply with all requests of the, the school department with mask and, and all of that. We would just, you know, we're looking for some sort of concrete answer and opportunity. Thank you.
Brian, Brian. Questions or comments from the board? Christine.
We need to hear from Dr. Conti, but as soon as it's possible to come to a conclusion, I would like to support the youth organizations by enabling them to use the buildings. But I understand that you're trying to figure it out, so.
Again, Ms. Monaco, I'd, I'd love to have them use the buildings too. I think, as Mr. Poopa said, they're, they're a great partner. We love the buildings being, being utilized. Volleyball is a school-sponsored sport. We can mandate masks for the athletes and the spectators. Again, I'm assuming the people who are using our buildings, if they're student-oriented, I guess I'd like to maybe make that distinction with the, with the committee as opposed to non-student-related. And then as long as they're following our, you know, our indoor protocols, which again, at this time, is all the participants would need to be masked. And I don't have any control over the coaches or the adults. And if you all just mandated vaccines, so I'm just saying, I, I, I think, I, obviously, I can't tell someone in the community that they would, they would need to be vaccine for a, an organization that I don't have any control over, but we could certainly encourage it, I guess. So again, I don't have a particular issue with it. Again, there's some subtleties here that I'm not sure how would work, how we would work out. Remember, if a child is close contact and they can test and stay in school, I'm not sure they would be eligible to participate in a youth basketball program if they're in quarantine, even though they could participate in school, even if the game or event or the team was meeting in a, in, in one of our school buildings. So that's all. And I honestly just didn't know the extent of the outbreaks that we would see in September. I, I still don't know. But I certainly understand for planning purposes that they need to know that they can get into the building. So I guess I'm talking in circles at this point. I'm not really feeling like I can restrict access at this time. I think people were very patient last year. Again, as long as they're following our protocols. And again, I'm not going to be there to check on whether they're following. Um, again, as long as they're following our protocols, um, and again, I'm not going to be there to check on whether they're following our protocols or not, but, uh, um, again, I would support them using the facilities as long as the committee was in, was in agreement.
Um, I would agree with that, I, I have a fair amount of experience with that organization over the years, they're all Burlington kids, mostly young, young kids. Um, and be, they're being coached and supervised by Burlington parents, so I think we can safely, uh, expect that, um, they will comply with, with any requests, and, um, I, I have no concern as far as that goes, and obviously, they do need some planning time, they got to get applications out, and they got to get kids involved, they got to line up volunteers, um, so it's not something we can tell them on October twenty-seventh, they, they got a green light and can expect them to be going by November first, so. Um, I think we have to, uh, for an organization such as this, and, you know, we might have to do it organization by organization, depending on the use and, and things like that, but I just, um, I feel that this is a pretty solid group. Uh, Catherine?
Yeah, I was just going to say that when, uh, the paperwork goes out, um, you know, the paperwork where people are signing up, I mean, could they sign paperwork saying that they would comply with our policies?
Yeah.
Um, that that's something they could sign as part of their paperwork to sign up.
Could you make that part of the, um, the, whatever application that you, that you send out, Brian?
Mr. Chairman, absolutely, like I said, we'll comply with any request. Um, a- as a board, we'll get that out to all volunteer coaches, um, and, and we'll definitely have a strict enforcement on that.
As long as the families know that.
There are some rules that they're going to have to comply with depending on situation going forward. Um, is there any other?
We completely understand that.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on this particular issue? Anybody raising hands out there, Bob?
In order, uh, Mr. Sinessi is next.
Adam, is that you? Go ahead.
That is me, thank you. I just want to bring it to everyone's attention, it sounds like the board is amenable to being flexible in some areas. I do know that Pop Warner Cheer, this affected that group for the first time last week, this is my first year as a cheer parent, but I know that the cheerleaders have been, they're not allowed to use the gyms, and that resulted in some instances of workarounds that have resulted in the students going to other towns to use different facilities that aren't as open here as the gyms that we have, that are shared with other towns, and in some instances because they're forced to take time slots that might not be optimal, because they're sort of scrambling to get what they can get. I know some groups of fifth graders are stay, are ending practice at nine-thirty at night in the middle of the week, on a school week. So, if you could make an exception for Pop Warner, that would be fantastic also, thank you.
Chair.
Again, Mr. Chair, if we're going to allow, might as well allow it, so I'm just saying, I think that's, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, Ms. Simon.
Yeah, I, I would, I mean, I think that addresses the issue that Dr. Conti mentioned at the beginning, that we should be clear if we're allowing student-related after-school hours activities or non-student-related also. And at this point, the reason to open up the facilities is because of the kids' need for these kinds of activities and wanting to make that available to them in as, as much as we can and as safe a way as we can. So I would, uh, like to, our decision tonight to include student-related, at Burlington student-related activities tonight, and we can always modify that later. Um, we can add adult groups later, we can add whatever we want later, but perhaps what we could do is start with Burlington student-related groups with agreements to follow all the Burlington protocols, and I want to clarify that includes if a student is out on quarantine, that means they're not to be participating in, um, after-school activities, even if they're at the buildings.
Carol.
Uh, thank you, yeah, um, I'm in agreement with everything that has been said, and I just, I guess the question for Mr. Kuna, and I think I remember from last year that the HVAC systems are running continuously, and if we want to just make sure that those layers of mitigation, including masks and following test and state protocols and HVAC, that it's, will provide the safest environment for these activities.
Yeah, if I can comment through the chair, um, so yes, we would put that policy in place, um, right now, because we're not scheduling the events, we're not scheduling the air handlers to work, uh, in the off-hours, um, so once we have those, uh, dates and buildings booked, um, then we would schedule that, yes. Can I have two comments? Uh, one comment is, is, another hand is raised, uh, I think I'd like to let them speak, um, but I, when you say student events, uh, student-centered outside groups, um, are we talking everything on the community custodial group? Or are we still talking about taking these more on an individual basis as the request comes in? Um, we handle fifty-plus groups on a year, and are we talking multiple groups in the building at the same time, things like that?
I don't know how you can allow some and restrict others, so, um, I would say, Bob, honestly, we, we're just going to, uh, open up, and we're going to articulate to the groups that they need to follow our, um, safety procedures, and that technically these are not school events, and if students are quarantined, they shouldn't be participating. So I think we'll, we'll, I don't, I'm not sure how we would say.
And, and maybe, uh, just add language to whatever agreement, to whatever you're saying with them, saying that, um,
At this time, we're going to comply with all students.
Violation of, uh, of, uh, um, of all the rules will subject the, the permit to being pulled.
Um, last question before, uh, another hand raised, um, effective November one, or? Have, have voted on tonight?
The, the only, the only potential problem with that is I know for the cheerleaders, they've, they're, they're, they're in session now. Um, so. But I want to give you sufficient time to get things prepped for that too, so, Bob.
Right, so whatever time.
October one, October fifteen?
Because starting tonight, we're going to get twenty-five requests.
This isn't a policy change, this is, uh, we'll, we'll just manage it differently, so Bob, we'll just start opening up.
Okay.
Okay. You say there were people out there with hands raised?
Um, there's one additional hand raised, Christine Kim.
Christine Kim, are you there?
Hi.
Hi, Christine.
So, um, how are you? Thank you for, uh, discussing this, I just wanted to say thank you to the, um, school committee for re-looking at this policy. Um, I think it's safer for the kids to stay within Burlington and have to increase their circle. Um, so I'm super happy about this, I'm hoping that the, did, did you discuss the timeframe for? I'm a, I'm a coach for Burlington Pop Warner, I have one of the younger teams. I know this is going to be, uh, really great for my kids that I coach. Um, did you, huh, were you looking at October first?
Ms. Kim, we said we would start immediately.
Even better, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, if there's nobody else with a hand raised, one more?
No, but if I could just comment, um, so we have received numerous requests in my office, um, so that means we will probably receive some new requests, which we'll respond to, but we'll also follow up with, um, people that have requested, and again, for clarity, these are student-based groups, and we're still not allowing outside groups, correct? Okay. Thank you.
Um, next item on the agenda, superintendent's goals.
Uh, again. Thank you, Mr. Chair, I just want to clarify, we're really going to do our, uh, last two agenda items together. Um, the, um, the, the MOA and the policy at the end of the meeting, we, we've already covered, so we're, we'll sort of take the policy and work towards memorandum of agreements with the, with the unions afterwards, so that's what we decided, so again, we're sort of compressing the last part of the agenda. So at your places, um, and I'm trying to remember, um, if you were here for the origination of, of this, um, the Planning for Success document, believe it or not, is something, um, the district improvement plan that we, uh, work on every three years. Um, I seem to have lost a year and a half of my life somewhere in the middle of that, but, um, um, so what we were trying to do this year is, uh, get back to some instructional, um, forward-thinking conversations, so I wanted to, um, present the school committee again, you've already voted on this document, you don't need to, uh, vote again, or unless you want to reaffirm the document. Um, and I just wanted to highlight a couple things, is that there are really four, four areas that we are looking at. Uh, first of all, we did add the, um, the, uh, equity statement that the school committee had, um, developed, uh, last, last year. So, um, the equity statement was, um, was added, and that was on page, um, five, if you would notice, uh, again, so thank you for developing the equity statement, where we, we added it after the, um, mission and vision. Um, and, um, we, um, might need to do a little bit more work on the mission to better align it with the equity statement, so it may be something that we come back to, um, that we come back to with. Um, certainly in our, um, twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-five, um, version of this, I think we have, um, um, four objectives, um, and again, that was learning, equity, culture and relationships, um, and then the, um, facilities and finance, those are the four areas. Um, I just wanted to point out, um, a couple of things that were in the plan that I believe we're going to finally, uh, get to. Um, so under the equity objective, we've obviously added some, uh, human resources to our, uh, equity mission. Um, and you see sort of our top bullet, and our top outcome that we are looking for is an equity audit. So I know we've talked about that with the committee, uh, for several years, um, we feel like we finally have the, uh, human resources in place, again, with, with Ray Porch, who is our new, uh, director, you've all met, um, Ray, I think Ray is going to be, um, championing, um, and overseeing the effort to getting our equity audit done this year, so I think we're excited about, uh, accomplishing that. Um, and then there are, um, are other aspects that we're, we're working on as well. Um, again, with culture and relationships, I also wanted to highlight that, um, um, commu-, you know, we're looking to enhance our communication to all families, uh, and we have other resources there, again, um, Jennifer Knight is our Director of Family and Community Engagement. Um, and we have, um, so we have additional resources that are, uh, in support of the plan and have, um, I think are hopefully going to help us provide the outcomes that the committee was looking for back in two thousand, uh, two thousand nineteen. The information that we gleaned from the equity audit will obviously then inform, uh, our next three-year plan, which we'll get to, um, in subsequent years. So I think that's what we're doing. Also, as a part of this, um, the committee needs to, um, approve my goals every year, so, um, we've updated a student learning goal and a professional practice goal as part of this, and one thing that we are, again, restarting is, um, our evaluation process has really been on hold, uh, the last two years, and so we're re- restarting our, um, evaluation process for all employees. Um, again, Patrick has been, um, working hard with the principals, our administrative team, again, with, um, with Mr. Porch, um, to, um, create, uh, some common planning modules across, um, all the schools to reintroduce our, um, evaluation procedures again, and to emphasize the objectives that are a part of this, uh, part of this planning document. And so, um, um, the, one of the ideas is the, um, we would all have a common professional practice goal, so, um, the, my professional practice goal is clearly focused on, um, having all students, um, thrive, that word thrive. Um, I hope you can trace back to the school committee's equity statement. Um, so again, in looking at what you all discussed and prioritized in your equity statement, I'm including that in my professional practice goal, and then we're asking all the other educators to create a professional practice goal under the umbrella of, um, my professional practice goal. So with that, we'll be aligning, um, that school committee, um, priority of their equity statement sort of throughout the, throughout the district. So I just wanted to make sure I, I highlighted that, and, uh, we're going to move, um, forward on that. So, I guess what I'm asking for tonight is a, um, reaffirmation of, uh, a three-year plan, and normally I wouldn't need to do that, but we've had sort of a distraction, um, for, uh, for a little while, so maybe if you could reaffirm this. Um, and then, in so re, in so doing, by reaffirming this, um, you would be, um, including, um, my goals, uh, for the, for, for this year. Um, and again, when we are, uh, talking about inclusion, we're talking about, um, all students as well, so, um, all learning styles, I think a term that people were using is, um, neurodiverse, uh, students as well, so, um, again, we're, we're sort of including that in, in all of our, in all of our conversations around, um, equity and learning. So, again, I didn't want to spend a whole lot of time, because you've already seen this, you've already proved it, um, but, um, kind of, I was excited prior to sort of the end of July about getting back to this for full-time. Uh, and, uh, but, uh, we're going to have to do both and, um, uh, for a while, and, um, and I do, it's just been so great to have the kids back, I think our teachers are happy to be back, I think there's great things happening in our classrooms and our buildings, and, um, I just, um, I'm hoping all the, we can take care of all the pandemic stuff and, um, get back to what we do best. So, Mr. Chair, if someone could.
The chair will entertain a motion to reaffirm the, uh, Planning for Success District Plan twenty-nineteen dash twenty-twenty-two.
So moved.
And inclusive of my goals, my student learning goal and professional practice goal.
So moved.
What he said.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I had, just wanted to thank Dr. Conti for getting us through the last eighteen months. As I said earlier, the pandemic is not over, but also getting us back to these important goals and, and priorities also, and keeping the eye on the important things, so thank you, and I vote aye.
And everybody else did as well, five zero zero. Anything else to come before the board? Any, uh, no need for executive session this evening?
Uh, no need for an executive session, I did want to just highlight for the board, and I'd like with, uh, the chair's permission to put together a, um, a, a letter of recognition and thank you to the, um, AFC, American Family Care Urgent Care Facility. Um, I think that we've been working with, uh, Dave Adams, uh, through the Burlington Area Chamber of Commerce, and he's really extended himself in the, um, the AFC Urgent Care to really help us, uh, serve our kids better, so, Mr. Chair, with your permission?
Absolutely, yeah. I think that's a great idea. Um, if there's nothing else, chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we adjourned.